Good evening, everybody. Let's, uh, let's give it a minute, let the, uh, the room fill up a little bit, we'll get started. Okay, looks like we leveled off at about forty-four participants. That's thirty-two attendees. Thirty-three attendees. Okay, uh, if we could come to order, please, let's get started. And let me just share my screen.
Hello, everybody, how you doing, Commissioners?
Eddie, how you doing?
I'm okay.
Okay, if everybody could, please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Under God.
Liberty and justice. Alright, thanks, everybody. Uh, could I have a sunshine announcement, please, Erica?
Yes, and tonight is Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021, and this is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled start time of 5:30 PM. In an effort to adhere to social distancing protocols and best practices imposed by city and state authorities, the City of Jersey City canceled all public meetings until further notice. As a result, this planning board meeting is being held virtually as a video conference that's open to the public. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the juror, with the city clerk on January 25th, 27th, and 28th. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
Okay, thanks, Erica. Uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, um, Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Thicke.
Yeah.
Commissioner Horton.
President.
Dr. Desai.
Here.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Yeah.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you, uh, could we swear in the staff, please, Mike?
I see Cameron, Tim, Erica, and Mallory. You guys swear any testimony you give tonight, it's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Uh, do we have any correspondence, Erica?
Yes, um, in addition to the three items that, at the top of the agenda that are adjourned, which I'll repeat, are case, uh, P20-093, 181, 189 Academy Street, that is carried to the February 16th meeting with preservation of notice. Case P20-070 for 626 Newark Avenue is carried to February 16th with preservation of notice. And case P20-155 for 198 Cadbury Street is carried to February 16th with preservation of notice. And one additional item that is carried is item number twenty-one, for case P20-115 for 15th Park Lane South. That is also carried to the February 16th, 2021 meeting with preservation of notice.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so let's get right into new business, everybody. Uh, we'll call a case P21-004, is a section thirty-one review for Casino in the Park. Uh, the address being 679 West Side Avenue.
There. If you may, I think we were gonna swear in, Dr. Desai.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Doctor, decide, do you swear or affirm? Do you swear or do you affirm, Doctor Desai?
I swear.
Okay. So, Dr. Desai has been reappointed as a planning board member, and now we're going to administer the oath of the office. So, Dr. Desai, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Vichyad Desai.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the office.
Perform all the duties of the office.
Of planning board member.
Of planning board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And I will support.
And I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of United States.
The St- Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of State of New Jersey.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Jersey City.
And laws and ordinances of City of Jersey City.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to same.
And I will bear true faith in allegiance to same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of people.
Thank you, Dr. Desai, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Doctor.
Congratulations.
Happy to have you.
Congratulations, good to have you back.
Congratulations, Doctor Desai.
Thank you.
Erica, we will need to have Doctor Desai just sign the oath. So, if we could get that to her and she can sign it, so we have it on file.
Will do.
Okay, thank you, guys. Alright, so let's call, uh, case P21-004, the section thirty-one for Casino in the Park. The address is 679 West Side Avenue.
Um, Erica, we should be looking for Francesca Girantana and Michael O'Connor.
Yeah.
In there somewhere.
We have two hands raised.
Oh, there's Francesca, yeah.
Mike O'Connor's here.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, and I'd ask if you could also, uh, enable Norman Guerra, our, uh, CEO of the Hudson County Improvement Authority. He's on, and I think I, I asked him to raise his hand also.
So, what was the name?
Norman Guerra. He just raised his hand, I believe.
Yeah, I just promoted him.
Great, and then, uh, another promotion, if you don't mind, Michael Cohen from PSNS, our engineer. And then Jeffrey Fleischer, I believe Jeffrey has logged in, he's our architect.
Alright, I think, are there two Michael Cohens?
I don't know. We'll take the chance, that, that looks like him.
He's got his hand raised.
Excellent.
And you said Jeff?
Yeah, Jeff Fleischer. So. Thank you very much. Uh, as, as the, the chairman has said, this is a capital project referral uh, from the Hudson County Improvement Authority, the County of Hudson, for a project in Lincoln Park, uh, at the location of the, uh, Casino in the Park. And, uh, I, we have a PowerPoint which Francesca is, uh, able to share. And I'd just like to introduce Norman Guerra, uh, to start the presentation. We know you have a very full agenda, so we'll be as quick as we can and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Council.
Norman?
So Chairman, as is typical, uh, of our board, we can mark the entire PowerPoint as A1 for the record. And, uh, it can be submitted and left on file.
Okay, thank you, Council.
That's great, and, uh, I'm, I, I'm not sure if Norman's having difficulty, um, getting on, on audio, so.
How about now, Michael?
There you are, Norman.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, guys.
Not a problem, Norman, this is our fifth Zoom call today with Norman, so.
I think I would know this by now.
Norman.
First of all, I'd like to first.
Norman, one moment, before you get started, um, are you able to turn on your video or no?
Uh, we're gonna add it on, let's see.
There we go.
About now. There you go. There we go.
I just wanna swear you in, alright?
Sure.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight, it's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Norman, last name is Guerra, G-U-E double R-A. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Hudson County Improvement Authority. Okay, and Council, um, are we qualifying your witness as an expert?
I, I don't believe so, I, I, and, and again, it's up to your counsel if, uh, how, how we wanna qualify people. I know this is a, the section thirty-one review, so, um, Norman's not an expert, but he is certainly a representative of the Improvement Authority and essentially, uh, uh, the responsible party for the project.
I could, Kirk, not an expert, he is the Executive Director of the Improvement Authority, it is a section thirty-one. To the extent that he's going to provide any necessary expert testimony in a field, we can recognize it at that time.
Thank you.
Okay, again, I'd like to thank the planning board for giving us the opportunity tonight to present the project. Um, as you know, Hudson County has designated the Hudson County Improvement Authority with the task of replacing the former facility known as the Casino in the Park. The proposed facility is to be constructed on the site of the former catering facility. Uh, the authority through a public process selected Landmark Hospitality to operate and construct the facility. Uh, with us on our team tonight is Michael Cohen. He's the Authority's consulting engineers and program manager for this project, who will provide a overview of the project. So, I'd just like to turn that over to Michael Cohen now.
And, and Mr. Chairman and Council, we are offering Michael, uh, for his expert testimony. He's a licensed, uh, professional engineer, and Michael can, uh, I believe Michael's testified before the Jersey City Planning Board, uh, previously.
Sure, let's just get him sworn in, and then we'll, uh, we'll qualify him.
How's it going, Michael, you hear me? You're currently muted.
How about now?
Perfect, thank you, I'm just gonna swear you in, alright?
Good thing.
Can you raise your right hand, do you swear any testimony you give tonight, it's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Michael Cohen, it's C-O-H-E-N.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cohen, good evening, uh, yeah, you've, you've testified before us before, your license is current tonight?
It is, yes, sir.
Okay, you're qualified, thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, thank you, Norman, and thank you, uh, everybody, and good evening. Um, I'm just gonna walk you through kind of a brief overview of the project, uh, kind of a high level, and, uh, then I'm gonna turn it over to the project architect, who will give you a little more detail on the actual facility. As, uh, Mr. Guerra mentioned, the Improvement Authority is the, uh, the authority that is over this project, and, and you see here just some of the folks that are involved, including Mass Construction is involved with this. PSNS is a firm I'm with, we're consulting engineers. And of course, the Hudson County Planning and Francesca deeply involved in this. So, this is kind of the county's team. And on the next slide, you'll see the operation and design team headed by Landmark Hospitality. Del Sano Contracting is going to be the contract on the project. Fleischer Architect is their architect, and their civil engineer is Burton Engineering. Moving ahead, general narrative of the project, as Norman mentioned, this is gonna be a new facility that's gonna replace that building that you've all seen for, depending on how old you are, many, many years. The, uh, the pre-existing building was there since the thirties, and, uh, hopefully, this is going to do it proud, this replacement. It's, uh, it's gonna be quite an interesting building. It's gonna be a, a three-story facility, uh, which will actually have a smaller footprint than the previous building, which will allow us actually more space on the outside to do more things around the building and in conjunction with the park. As I mentioned, Landmark will be operating this facility. You probably know Landmark, they have two other very, uh, famous or popular facilities in Jersey City, as well as six other beautiful facilities throughout New Jersey, and one in New Hope, Pennsylvania. So, they're experienced and very qualified operator. The building will have banquet halls on the first and second floor with kitchens and support space. And what we think will probably be the, the, the signature spot will be the third floor, which is partially enclosed and have a restaurant and a, uh, a ceremony space, and an outdoor deck, which will include a bar and, and dining for the, for the restaurant. From that, I'm just gonna give you a quick look at the front of the building, which give you an idea of what it's gonna look like, and the architect will talk a little more about that. But it will, it does show you that there'll be balconies on both the second floor and the roof. And again, those are gonna allow for quite nice views out over the lake, which is right in front of the building and the rest of the park. And to the left of this view, you see there's open space that we are going to use for outdoor patio and dining, and, and that'll be where park patrons will, will be supplied. Moving from here, I'm gonna turn it over to the architect, Jeff Fleischer, who's gonna walk you through each of the floor plans.
Hi, Jeff.
Okay.
Just swear in, okay? Sorry, Chris.
That's alright.
Did you wanna do questions first before we swearman?
Uh, no, it's swearman.
Alright, great, Jeff, I'm gonna swear you in, alright?
Okay.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight, it's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Jeffrey Fleischer. F-L-E-I-S-H-E-R.
Thank you.
Mr. Fleischer, good evening, uh, are you a, um, licensed architect in the state of New Jersey? Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Okay. Um, we're currently looking at the first floor plan. Um, on the first floor, there'll be a banquet hall that will seat up to a hundred and ninety people, um, with, uh, support space behind, uh, kitchen bridal room. Um, there are three stairs, one ceremonial stair. And to the left, you can see the outdoor patio. Um, and then in the front of the building, there'll be a quarter, portico chair entrance, um, off of Tennis Court Road. We can go to the second floor. On the second floor, we have a banquet hall that will, has a capacity of two hundred and twenty-five occupants, um, along with, uh, balcony, second floor balcony. And then in the rear, there'll be more support space, um, kitchen, another bridal suite. And then the penthouse level, we have ceremonial space, which will also be a lounge when not in use for ceremonies, as well as restaurant space. Um, and then we have a, a large outdoor deck bar area, which will overlook the, the lake and the park. Um, and then there's a small kitchen in the back to support that third floor level. Um, there will be two elevators to that floor, one service elevator for the kitchen staff, and then one elevator for the public. The building itself, oh, that's the site. So, the building itself will be made up of, uh, laminated beam construction in the front, uh, part of the, uh, building, and the rear part will be, uh, steel, concrete, and masonry.
Uh, this is, this is Michael Cohen again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick up on the site. Um, on the previous slide, you, you got a, a glimpse of the, uh, a view of the site as it exists today. Francesca, I don't know if you can go back one. There you go, um, that is actually the site as it stands today. As you see, the, the old building's been, uh, been raised, uh, site's been leveled and a pad is kind of ready for the new building. You can see how it sits off of Tennis Court Drive, the main road there. Over to the right, you can't quite see it, is the lake at Lincoln Park. So, we, again, it'll have a great view of the lake. Behind it is Nunda Ave, which is the, uh, adjacent neighborhood that, that fronts to, uh, Communipaw. Um, and among other interesting things, you can see the site is, we don't have to take down any trees, we don't have to really do any more clearing. I mean, with the building gone, with the old parking lot gone, the site is ready for the new facility. So, we're, uh, we're looking forward to it, getting there. So, on the next side, again, you'll see a little bit more about the site and how the building does sit relative to the road, and how Jeff had mentioned that a road will come off of Tennis Court Drive, a port, to a portico chair, where, uh, patrons can be dropped off and picked up, um, and, and entered directly into the building. There'll be a new parking lot, uh, the whole roadway network around, in and around the building will be redone and reconfigured to, to ease, uh, traffic in the area, to make it clearer. Um, we will have forty-six spots directly onsite. We will be improving the crosswalks and the pedestrian walkway, which will lead from Nunda around the parking lot to the front and over to, right to Tennis Court Drive. So, a lot of attention is being paid to pedestrian access and, and passage. Um, we will obviously be adding new lights, uh, for safety, so the site will be well-lit. Um, and on the next slide, I think you'll see really the, uh, one of the highlights, which is the landscaping, the, we are proposing quite extensive, uh, landscaping for the facility. Almost thirty percent of the area to be disturbed is going to remain impervious and landscaped. Um, there'll be quite a few, uh, new lawn trees and shrubs, and buffers to the neighborhood behind, and really opening and welcoming to the lake in front. So, it really should sit, um, as I mentioned before, it's, it's a, actually a smaller footprint building, so it'll sit on the site, we think, nicer than the other one did, and will present quite a nice, uh, compliment to the park. And I think from here, I think Norman's gonna talk a little bit about the schedule. Yep, thank you, Michael. And as Michael stated, the building was demoed, the completion of the demolition was back in April 2020. Uh, commencement of the construction, we're hoping to have a shovel-in-the-ground spring, this coming spring. Um, and a construction timeline is estimated to be anywhere between twelve to fourteen months. So, we're, uh, anxious, uh, to get this going. Uh, there's been a number of community meetings, and we were hoping to be in the ground already, and then COVID hit, and that sort of set everything back. And, uh, we're just trying to get back on course with this. And of course, I'd like to thank the planning board for your, uh, uh, for the opportunity to present this to you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Um, the one question I have, and I, I assume I'll direct it to Mr. Fleischer, um, the trash enclosure, how is that screened?
We losing? Alright, no, I'm just unmuting, sorry.
Um, it's okay.
Yes, that, that'll have a fence enclosure around it. Um, I believe it's a board-on-board fence.
Okay.
Or something similar.
Okay. Excellent.
And if I may, this is Norman again, we'll be certain that the, uh, the trash and the recyclables is properly managed. As you know, we're the entity that does the enforcement for all solid waste and recycling in the county. So, uh, we will definitely focus on that.
Good, that's good to hear. Okay, uh, thank you, guys, anybody else, any questions?
I have a question for Michael Cohen, I think it's maybe, uh, the in-and-out traffic on Tennis Court Drive over there, is Tennis Court Drive, I was looking at the, trying to look at the arrows, is that a two-way lane? Because it, it looks like it's, the first lane closer to the building comes in and out, but how is that other lane crossed?
Uh, you're, you, it actually is one way, the park was reconfigured to one-way traffic, wrote recently. So, it, it is right in and right out, the only, I, I say, directly in and directly out.
Right, so the back, the back road that says Tennis Court Drive, you have arrows going in both directions? Different directions, I mean?
No, well, that.
That's not the traffic.
No, that's an old, that's an old overlay, it is one way.
I thought the park was all, there's a one direction.
It is, very good.
Okay.
Now, that's an old overlay, it's on.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
And Eddie, I can speak from experience that, uh, don't go the wrong way.
No, I know, I know the park has changed, uh, I worked on a fountain, so.
Okay, anybody else, any questions? Alright, gentlemen, thank you.
Alright, thank you again.
Thank you, members.
Thank you.
Okay, is anybody here from the public that wants to comment? Anybody here from public, if you could raise your hand, if you'd like to comment on this application?
I see one hand raised, I'm gonna allow them to.
Sure. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine.
Okay, so, I'm, someone on the phone to speak?
Yes, um, I'm on the phone to speak.
Hi, how's it going, uh, I need to swear you in, okay?
Sure, sure, sure.
Do you swear that any testimony you give tonight, it's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, so help me God.
And could you, uh, just state and spell your name for me, please?
Sure, my name is Jean Daly, um, Jean is spelled J-E-A-N-N-E. Daly is spelled D-A-L-Y.
Thank you.
Ms. Daly, good evening, uh, this is Chairman Langston, we have five minutes for you.
Oh, I don't need that, but thank you so much. No, I, um, unfortunately, since I'm not on Zoom, I can't see what the actual architectural plans were. Um, I guess the one thing I was curious about, maybe something for the Hudson County official to think of in the future, is there anything to design that's gonna, you know, make it a, like, a destination, like an architectural destination? I guess I've been following a lot of the mass timber trends, and I was just wondering if architecturally, there's something profoundly unique about the structure that would in fact make it a destination versus just a banquet hall? And that's the only question I have.
Thank you, Ms. Daly.
I would leave that to the architect, I think that he's got an answer for that.
Yep.
Um, yes, I would like to think it's unique. Um, I believe it's one of the first timber-framed commercial structures in Jersey City.
And it. Would that be considered a mass timber, sorry?
Yes. Um, it will be, uh, glue-laminated wood timbers, um, wood decking. Um, so yes, I would classify it as that.
Oh, terrific, thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you, Ms. Daly. Uh, Mr. Fleischer is, it actually resembles, um, I think it's one of the owner's other properties, uh, I think it's the Stone House in Warren, I could be wrong.
Yes, they, they did do a mass timber, uh, project there. I wasn't the architect of the now project, but yes, they did.
Gotcha, okay, yeah, it looks, uh, looks similar, which is good, which is a good thing. Okay, uh, we have one more hand raised?
Shaya.
Shaya, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
How's it going?
I'm reading myself.
Are you able to, uh, turn your video on?
Um, yes. Let me see, start video.
Alright, I see you there now, I just wanna swear you in, okay?
Yep.
Raise your right hand.
Okay.
Hi. Uh, do you swear or affirm any testimony you give tonight, it's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could, uh, could you state and spell your name for me, please?
My name is Shaya Bodansky, S-H-A-Y-A, last name Bodansky, B-O-D-A-N-S-K-Y.
Thanks. Mr. Bodansky, good evening, uh, we have five minutes for you.
Okay, thank you very much, first, first of all, I wanna thank, uh, the board for everything you're doing. I just have a question, maybe I missed in the beginning, I would like to know if there's gonna be anything for the public in the park, uh, with this, let's, if someone doesn't buy something from this place, um, seedings or something for the public?
Uh, Mr. Guerra, I assume you will, or would you feel that?
I'll touch, I'll touch upon that. Uh, there is a patio area, where it'll be, there'll be some outdoor seating, and I'm gonna refer to it as a, sort of a grab-and-go, for those that don't wanna go up into the restaurant or up onto the rooftop lounge, so that'll be there for parkgoers. In reference to the entire park, I, I can't answer for the parks department. I believe near one of the ballfields, they have a small, uh, a vendor there selling hot dogs and what have you. But here, our intent is to, uh, have something there with benches in a patio area for those that are just passing through the park, whether they're jogging or, or after playing tennis. As you know, the tennis courts are right near.
For those that are just passing through the park, whether they're jogging or or after playing tennis, as you know, the tennis courts are right nearby. Uh, at least there'll be a place for them.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, I just wanna say I'm in support anything that we do um. Building in our area, any developments, those kind of things. It helps with jobs, it helps for the people living there, it helps attract people. And I'm very in support that the that the board should vote on it because I think it's a benefit. It's private and public benefit for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Bodansky. We appreciate it. And uh, Mr. Ware, if I could expand just for a second on that question, uh, the green space, all that passive green space, that's open to the public also, correct?
That's that's open to the public. Um. On the right hand side, just outside the line is an area there right now. That's all wide open to the public. I believe they have park benches there. And then again, on to the left of the building is the area I was referring to. And this also complements the golf course, which we built uh, about five or six years ago. And it's very possible from the rooftop of this, you might have a nice view of the golf course too. So between the golf course and a new project here, that's a, this will be a real asset to the park.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have anybody else from public that wants to comment? If you could, you could raise your hand if you'd wish to speak. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to speak.
You're seeing no more public. I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public's closed. Um. I'm sorry, I don't know who's this is. Matt, this is yours.
Okay, so I'm covering for Matt. Um, and. Basically, with any section thirty one, we look to see how it comports with the master plan and. The objectives that this application is satisfying are to maintain existing parks and recreation fillet facilities. To upgrade all existing parks and recreation facilities. And specifically, we state in our master plan to maximize the utilization of Lincoln Park. So. That one also is definitely getting hit here. So with that, um, planning staff supports this and has no further comments.
Okay, thanks, Cameron.
Mr. Chi, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P or two zero dash zero, I'm sorry, P two one, there's zero zero four is presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded for approval.
All right, Commissioner Gangadin.
Hi. Beautiful project. Looking forward to. Um, visiting as well and celebrating.
Commissioner Horton.
Hi, thanks for all the hard work, guys. It was great.
Doctor Desai.
Doctor, do we have you?
You're muted.
Muting it. I.
Commissioner Takur.
All right.
Commissioner Torres.
Yeah, it's um, the other facility was nice. It was long overdue for a new one and um, you did a great job. It's gonna really look good in that park. Thank you. I vote I.
All right, Dr. Gonzalez.
I agree with Commissioner Torres. I think uh, this is a great uh, project and it was a, and a great job, guys. Really, really good job. I vote I.
All right, and Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I agree with everybody else. This is a really nice design. Um, it's gonna complement the park nice and um. Uh, you know, Lincoln Park is. Is really an underused gem in the city. I I think it's an amazing park. So I I think this does nothing but help that park. So uh, I gladly vote I.
All right, motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's uh, call case P two zero dash, thank you, guys. Call case P two zero dash zero eight three uh, is a minor site plan for three oh eight Academy Street.
And can people for this item please raise their hands?
See Mr. Joseph with his hand up.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Mr. Joseph. Glad to finally get to you.
So happy to be here. Um, so I have Mukti Bajaj this evening and I have Carolyn Morstall. I see both of them. Okay, great. Um, Stephen Joseph, the applicant, uh, counsel, I'd like to confirm you have my notices and they're acceptable.
Good evening, counsel. How are you? Uh, counsel, I did not see, did you send new notices? I have the old notice, which.
We did, we did send new notices over.
All right, just give me one. I could pull them up as well.
Maybe I sent the the older one to the list.
The. I have it here.
Okay, great.
So I have a notice dated January eighth. Setting tonight as the hearing date, so. Chairman, I'm in receipt of the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application this evening at three oh eight Academy Street. All does appear to be in order. We can go ahead and mark those as a one for the record.
Thank you, counsel.
Great. Thank you. Um, Stephen Joseph for the applicant. This is three oh eight Academy Street. It's located on the north side of Academy. Near the corner of Academy um, and Ripon Streets. It's in zone eight of Journal Square twenty sixty redevelopment zone. The applicant's proposing a new four story multifamily building with nine units, no parking spaces. In order to accomplish that, the applicant is requesting minor site plan approval. Um, and a a collection of C variances, side yard setback. At maximum bulkhead height, maximum mechanical area, you'll you'll see that they're they're pretty minor, relatively de minimis. The property is also demolished. We had obtained a a letter from the historic officer, but the permit has been pulled. It has been demolished. So. Let's um, get Mukti sworn in and we can begin the presentation.
Hi, Mukti, let me just swear you in, okay?
Yeah.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Smukti Bajaj, M U K T I, B A J A J. Bajaj.
Thank you. Ms. Bajaj, good evening. Uh, we've qualified you numerous times. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you're qualified. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I'll just go ahead and start sharing my screen. Uh, everybody is able to see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Okay, so this is um, hello everyone, this is three oh eight Academy Street. And the block is one two one zero six and the lot is thirteen. Uh, what I'm gonna do is I'm just going to zoom in the zoning data and. Relevant information, so. Uh, so this particular property is in General Square Development Zone. This is in zone eight, which is Bergen Square. And this, sorry about that. Uh, this is at the border of uh, Bergen Square Zone eight and Zone six. So it's the last property on Zone eight. Uh, this is on the north towards when I can street and it's between when I can and Bergen Avenue. Uh, there's an existing three story structure, uh, which was a single family house abandoned, which was demolished. Recently, probably two, three weeks back. Um, and what we are proposing is a four story nine unit building. Uh, the project does comply with all the yard and bulk requirements with the minor deviation requested. Uh. One of the deviation is for the side yard. Basically, the side yard required is five feet and we are proposing four point seven. So this uh, deviation for two inches there. And the other deviation is for the elevator, for the uh, bulk. Or the. Roof structure, which is permitted is ten feet and we have little excess because of the elevator shaft, which is thirteen feet. Uh, the grass area, the, this is a little wider lot, uh, lot. It is three thousand square feet, thirty five hundred. Um, the grass area of the total proposed building, which is four story, is six thousand uh, eight hundred. I'm sorry. Six thousand eight hundred and three square feet. Um, the each floor area is the average of seventeen hundred square feet. Um, out of this nine units, four are studios and five are one bedroom units. Let's go to the site plan. So this shows the survey, which shows existing three story building, which we had proposed to demolish and that has been demolished already. This is a proposed site plan. Basically shows a four story building with a setback of three feet one on one side on towards the north and uh, two feet on the right side of the building. The project does comply with the landscape requirement of sixty person in the front. So substantial landscaping has been given. We're also proposing one suite three. Um, so each floor basically has two or three units. Um, and also there's a cellar. Uh, so unit or the first floor has two units. One is one, the front unit is a studio. And the back unit is one bedroom. The average square feet of studios is range from uh, three fifty to four hundred square feet. And the bedroom, one bedroom is half hundred and forty to uh, five hundred and sixty five square feet. Uh, so the cellar has the mechanical and uh, nine buck bike parking spaces. Also, there's a, there are few lockers for for the residential units along with the garbage and recycle in the in the cellar. Also, the cellar has elevator access as well. And this shows the the bike parking detail over here. So these are the upper floors, uh, second and third floor are the same uh, unit count, basically two or two one bedroom units. And the third floor is slightly different and this we have a three units and there are three studios on the third floor. Also, there is a common rooftop deck which has X, basically for the entire building. Um, with a small elevator lobby of the rooftop deck. The square foot area of the rooftop deck is six hundred and forty square feet. This is a proposed facade for the building. So we have used a traditional brick with just the accent. Hardy panel system for second and third floor. And on the top, there's a balcony, which is the depth of the balcony is just three feet. Um, just to create that accent feature and um. So the red or the brick color is uh, brownish red brick, which is a similar tone here and the shoot of fiberglass and family. Which is this portion of it. Um, regarding the rear and the side facade, they are, you know, standard facades with the vinyl siding and on the upper level. And the stucco on the first floor. So vinyl siding will be a light gray color and the stucco also will be of a lighter tone, light, light gray. I think that pretty much concludes my testimony. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bajaj. Um, the. Only questions I have, um. I'm gonna refer to the elevator bulkhead there. Um, what's your material on the elevator bulkhead?
We have proposed stucco on the elevator bulkhead. I'll just show it to you on the facade. So the the roof deck or the enclosure is having a siding, but on the elevator stucco, the elevator. Access is uh, the stucco finish with a lighter tone, light gray.
Okay, so so that's not exposed cinder block. That's a stucco finish.
Yeah.
Um, and do you have a a sightline drawing? Um. From the street, is that elevator bulkhead visible?
It is not visible. We don't have a sightline drawing for this one because this was like almost in the middle of the building. So we have to know that it won't be visible. So this is a small bulkhead over here. And.
Okay, just.
And so this won't be visible.
I'm not gonna hold you to an exact number, but how far back do you think that is? That's about dead center of the building?
Yeah, I will. I can show it to you on the full plan. So this is um, fifteen and fifteen thirty feet away from the front of the building.
Okay. Okay, that's it for me. Anybody else? Any questions?
No.
Have a question on the um, property line on the east side of the building. Where all the windows are. On the west side, you have the windows. On the east side, you have windows. You are not up against the property line, are you?
No, we are not against the property line. On the east, we have two feet window, the two feet setback and there are no windows.
Okay. Okay.
West, there's a three feet one setback. That's only here where we have the windows.
So if somebody built up in that other property, it wouldn't be an issue.
No. Won't be an issue.
Anything else, Eddie?
Well, that'll be all.
Okay. Anybody else? Any questions for Mr. Ms. Bajaj? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we, we do have a a few variances associated with this application. So we have um, Carolyn or or licensed principal planner who's going to. Just give some testimony on those variances.
Good evening.
Hi, Carolyn. Let me just swear you in, okay?
Sure.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure. Carolyn Worstell, C A R O L Y N, Worstell, W O R S T E L L.
Thank you.
Ms. Worstell, good evening. Uh, we've qualified you in the past. Your license is current in New Jersey tonight?
It is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Great, thank you. Uh, Mukti, do you mind just keeping up the uh, the drawings and maybe uh, zooming into the uh, site plan?
Yeah.
Uh, so good evening tonight, everyone. Um, as Stephen mentioned, we have a couple of variances, um, three. Uh, one is for that minimum side yard setback. The maximum rooftop structure height and also for the uh, maximum mechanical area and other rooftop structures. Um, this property is located in that zone eight Bergen Square of the Journal Square twenty sixty redevelopment plan. Speaking to those uh, side yard setbacks, uh, Mukti, if you can just uh, zoom in just so we can see sort of the um. Yeah, perfect. And move up just a little bit. Uh, so in in a zone eight, um, the requirement is a minimum. Two yard, uh, two foot side yard setback to match a three foot side yard setback. Or vice versa, a three foot side yard setback to match a two foot side yard setback. Or to meet a minimum, to meet a fire code or building code to accommodate adjacent windows. Um, in this case, um, on our east side, which is next to this existing three story frame house, which is sort of uh, in that historic. A zone six. The existing building has that setback of two feet nine inches, um, sort of at its closest point. So it's, it's just under a three foot side yard on on that uh, building. We are providing a two foot side yard setback to match. Um, on that side. So in total, we are providing a four foot seven inch separation between the structures, which does meet that minimum fire um, code. To the west, uh, if Mukti, if you wanna, okay, you can see it here. Um, there is an existing six inch side yard setback on that. Uh, of the existing building to the west of us and we are providing a three feet one inch minimum setback on our side of the property. Again, providing a minimum of a three feet seven inch separation, which meets the fire code. Um, overall, um, our project is providing a total of five feet one inch setback for the combined side yard. Um, overall, um, our project is providing a total of five feet one inch setback for the combined side yards. Which, uh, will meet that fire and safety code while allowing for light and air and open space between the proposed building and the existing structures. Uh, moving over to that rooftop structure, uh, Mukti, again, if you just wanna go over to that elevation. We are proposing a thirteen foot elevator bulkhead. Um, where the maximum of ten feet, uh, on buildings of up to forty five feet is permitted for rooftop structures. And this comes from the city's, um, land development ordinance and is not, um, from the redevelopment plan. We are providing elevator service to, um, the roof, ADA access to that common roof deck area. So that extra sort of three feet, um, allows us to, for that overhead mechanical system, um, which is typical standard, uh, when, uh, providing rooftop access. Um, it should be noticed, um, noted, in the code, the way it's written is for buildings under forty five feet, you get the ten feet. We are, um, just about three and a half, half feet, uh, under that, that requirement. Um, whereas if we were at forty five feet, we would be permitted as of right, a height of twenty feet, um, for, uh, rooftop structures. So, um, while, you know, we're, we're looking for the, the variance, um, for a slightly taller building, um, you could have an extra, you know, ten feet in height. The other rooftop structures, including the two stairwells and, um, the, uh, elevator lobby do comply with that ten feet. They have a maximum of ten feet. Um, in addition, uh, this elevator, um, uh, extra bulkhead is setback. Um, I believe it's about almost twenty feet, um, and is not anticipated to be visible from, uh, the front along Academy Street. So it really should not have, um, an impact, uh, visible impact, uh, from the, the passerby. The final variance we're looking at here, um, is for rooftop coverage. We are proposing, um, a, approximately four hundred and sixty five square feet of rooftop structures and mechanical areas, which is about twenty seven point five percent of the rooftop area, um, which exceeds that sort of maximum twenty percent. Here, you know, again, we're, we're providing two, um, stair head, uh, stair bulkheads, the elevator, as well as sort of the, the, um, the small elevator lobby, which provides some shelter when people are coming up to the roof from, uh, that elevator or from those rear stairs. There's a little bit of, uh, shelter when they come up to that roof area. As stated, you know, the rooftop structures do comply, uh, with and exceed the required rooftop setback requirements. Um, and we are proposing planter boxes on the front facade to further screen, uh, that roof deck area. So, um, overall, we're, we believe that the benefits of this project outweigh the detriments. Um, you know, we're moving, um, well, the, the building site itself is now, um, vacant. Uh, there was originally, uh, you know, dilapidated building there, um, and we're replacing it with a new multifamily building that is consistent with that redevelopment plan, um, and new street trees, permeable pavers, um, and just overall, uh, a much nicer looking, building on the site. Uh, the project does promote several purposes of the municipal land use law. Um, purpose A, granting, uh, it, it will guide the appropriate, uh, use and development of the property in a manner to promote the general welfare through provision of an appropriate multifamily building consistent with the redevelopment plan. Needs purpose E, providing a density consistent with the goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan and promoting the establishment of appropriate population densities. Um, and purpose I, uh, with the replacement, uh, the development of this new, uh, multifamily building with all of the extensive front yard landscaping, uh, will improve the streetscape and really promotes a more desirable visual environment through creative development techniques. In terms of the negative criteria, granting the requested variances will not result in a substantial detriment to the general welfare. Um, its project is, uh, an appropriate infill development, um, of the property and it will improve the streetscape. Um, we are providing three hundred and eighteen square feet of front yard landscaping, which meets the minimum front yard landscaping requirement. And will improve the streetscape with a new street tree and permeable, uh, pavers. In addition, that front yard landscaping will provide screening for additional privacy and security to those front, uh, ground floor units. Um, and the building will meet, you know, all current fire and building codes, as well as providing adequate light, air and open space to those adjacent properties. Uh, granting the deviation will not result in a substantial detriment to the zoning ordinance with the zone plan. Um, the project is, uh, meets the requirements of the redevelopment plan is consistent with the existing and surrounding development found in Bergen Square in terms of the building footprint and massing, including heights and setbacks, which promote the purposes of zone eight. We are proposing a compliant, uh, seventeen point five foot front yard setback to match the adjacent buildings. Um, and the rear yard setback a- as well as compliant and matches the adjacent, uh, buildings with, uh, fourteen, uh, point six foot, uh, rear yard setback. Um, and overall, the, the proposed project advances the city, uh, master plan, providing unique, attractive and high quality residential development, um, and also advances several of the redevelopment plan objectives, including reducing automobile, automobile dependency, encouraging high density development in close proximity to mass transit, removal of vacated deteriorator and obsolete structures, and maximizing use of rooftop space for recreation. Uh, so in conclusion, um, the, uh, project, the benefits of the project outweigh the detriments. And the variances can be granted in that both the positive and negative criteria have been met.
Thank you, Ms. Worstel. Um, just a quick question. I, I'm not sure if you mentioned it or not. That fire code, uh, is forty two inches, if I'm correct?
Fire code requires thirty seven inches.
Thirty seven inches, okay. Okay, that's it for me. Anybody else? Any questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Worstel.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything else?
That's it. Um, that concludes our, our testimony.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody wants to comment, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, seeing
Anybody from public?
Seeing no public, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, all right, Tim, do you wanna wrap this up?
Yeah, I'm happy to see this project move forward finally. Uh, planning feels that the, uh, deviations requested are minimal and do not impact, um, the, uh, intent of the Sony District Bergen Square and the Journal Square twenty sixteen redevelopment plan. Uh, and overall promotes, um, the goals and principles of the, uh, Jersey City Land Development Ordinance. Uh, planning improves the development and we can put it to a roll.
Okay, thanks, Tim.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero dash zero three as presented to the board.
Second.
Okay, a motion is made and seconded for approval.
Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
Commissioner Takor.
Hi.
Dr. Desai.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Hi.
Commissioner Horton.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Uh, yeah, I think the, the deviations, the cases there for them and they, the applicants made the case. Um, I agree and I'm gonna vote I.
All in favor, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Joseph.
Have a wonderful evening.
You too. All right, let's call case P two zero dash one one zero is a minor site plan with C variance for ninety five Jefferson Avenue.
Mr. Height, where's Mr. Weinberg?
Good question.
He's here. I promoted him.
Yep. Probably just trying to get, get the video off and running.
Counsel, you out there? You're muted, counsel. Bring her back over.
You hear me now?
No.
We got you, counsel.
Okay, thanks for your patience. Want me to start?
Please, sure, please.
Okay, this is, this is a, first thing is, um, I'd like to put into evidence the, uh, book of service of the notice and publication. That should be there.
It is. Thank you, counsel. Chairman, I am receiving the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application this evening at ninety five Jefferson here in the city. All does appear to be in order and we can go ahead and mark that as a one for the record.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
All right, this is an application at ninety five Jefferson Avenue to put up a, uh, a two family home. It'll have, uh, two large apartments, parking spaces, a roof deck. And, um, I have two witnesses tonight. One is, uh, the architect, Raul Cabato, who testifies to the project itself and plans. The other is, uh, Charles Height, who was our planner. And he'll discuss the positive and negative criteria for the C variances. Um, I have a couple of, uh, remarks before we start. One is that the, uh, applicant has, has received a determination from historic, uh, preservation that, that is, knocking down the building that's there was, will not be a problem, has no historic significance. Second thing is, I, I spoke to, uh, Paul Amatuzzo. He's the president of the Pershing Fields Neighborhoods Association. I sent him the plans. He did a site. So I buy it, look, looked at that. He spoke to the neighbor and neither one of them had any, any, uh, questions or any objections through this application. So I'd like to call my first witness now, who is, um, Raul Cabato, the architect. He's been before the ward many times and he's gonna testify.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Raul, do you swear any testimony you're gonna give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Raul Cabato, R A U L C A B A T O.
Thank you.
Mr. Cabato, good evening. Um, yeah, we've qualified you numerous times. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Uh, can everybody see the screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, okay. Um, the subject project is to demolish the existing two story structure. Let me get a photograph here. And to construct a new, um, two family dwelling on a non-traditional sized lot located in an R one zoning district. The existing lot is thirty seven point five feet wide and eighty three point five feet deep, having an area of about three thousand one hundred thirty one point twenty five square feet. Um, a determination was made by the Jersey City Historic Preservationist that the existing structure does not possess enough significant integrity to prevent its demolition. We are proposing a three story two family dwelling with two parking garage. A ten foot wide curb cut driveway and garage door are also proposed. Um, one street tree is proposed, um, on the north side of the sidewalk, as shown on our zoning comparison chart. The proposed structure shall comply with most of the zoning bulk requirements. The proposed structure shall be about thirty four feet, five inches in width and fifty four feet, seven inches in length. The entire premises shall be over fifty seven hundred square feet in area. This building footprint is provided, uh, this building footprint provided the maximum building coverage permitted for this lot. The proposed front yard shall be six point five feet deep. We are requesting one variance for twenty four, twenty two foot, four inch rear yard. The proposed rear yard and front yard combined shall be twenty eight feet, ten inches, where thirty five feet is required in the R one zoning district. Sheet A one hundred one shows the first and second floor layouts. The first floor shall be a garage for two cars and shall be lined with utility and storage closets. There shall be a recreation room in the rear, which is accessory to the dwelling unit above and is accessed by, uh, an accessory stair to the dwelling unit above. Oh, sorry. Sheet A one oh two shows the third floor. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sheet one oh two shows the third floor plan as well as the roof plan. Two dwelling units are proposed on the upper floors, one each on the second and third floors. Each unit shall typically have five bedrooms, five bathrooms, with a balcony in the rear, uh, off of each rear bedroom. On average, each unit shall be about one thousand nine hundred and fifteen square feet. A roof deck is proposed. The third floor unit shall have exclusive use of the roof deck, which is over eight hundred square feet in area. There shall be green roof elements at the rear of the roof deck. The green roof elements consist of self drain plant trays. Of which we have a sample here. Uh, the green roof elements consist of self drain plant trays. This particular system was selected for its ease of installation, reasonable cost and easy maintenance. The modular nature of the system ensures that replacing parts become effortless. The benefits include stormwater management, reduction of the heat island effect, reduction of energy usage, noise reduction in addition to the visual and aesthetic benefits. Details of the green roof element can be found on sheet A one zero three. In terms of materials, the front facade shall be clad primarily of brick, of which we have a sample right here. There are also OREL windows, which shall be clad in metal panels, of which we have samples right here. All other elevations shall be clad in fiber cement siding, which we have some samples right here. Um, the samples can be found on sheet A two zero one. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cabato. Uh, anybody? Any questions for Mr. Cabato? Okay, thank you, sir.
No, I do have a question for.
Uh, go ahead, Ed. I'm sorry.
The, uh, parking space for the two cars in the, uh, garage?
Yes, sir.
Once again, we, uh, we see this, I'm hoping that that's for the same unit or they for separate units.
Uh, they are for separate units. It's one for, for each unit.
So how do we get the first car out, the second car out if the first car is not home? This happens all the time. We, we assume our neighbors are gonna be very friendly. We assume ten years from now, twenty years from now, they're gonna be good neighbors. And we're gonna allow somebody else to take the keys and move somebody else's vehicle in the middle of the night.
Um,
I don't understand this concept at all. It's, um, it's, it's, it's a concept that leads to trouble. I'm looking at a Mercedes Benz and a sixteen year old that just got his license, or eighteen year old, seventeen year old. And he's gonna take the keys of the Mercedes Benz and move it out of the garage, so he can move his father's car out of the garage. And then put the Mercedes Benz back inside. This concept is like, uh, very, very confusing to me.
Um, yes, I do agree. In this particular, uh, project, uh, commissioner, there is possibility to have them, uh, side by side. As you know, we're only allowed to have one, uh, ten foot garage door opening. So I say in this particular So I say in this particular case, there is a potential to have it reconfigured so that we have the, the car side by side and further in towards here so that they have the ability to maneuver out into that single garage door. And I think we, we would be able to do that only because this is a wider lot and a wider building. It's a little bit more difficult in the traditional 25-foot-wide lot in Jersey City.
Yes, um. I agree. So as of right now, though, if we don't do that, though, they will be leaving the keys somewhere in the garage? So somebody can move the car in case of an emergency? That's what the concept is?
That is correct, sir.
I don't understand this, and I hope one day that the planning staff will take a good look at this, and we shouldn't even have these in our plans. This whole concept is, I know we wanna get as many parking spaces and off the streets, but this concept right here, at least, it's just a remedy for trouble. But that's the only question I, comment I have, question I have on this. That's all. Jim Langston. Are you on this one?
All right, thanks, Eddie. Yeah, I, I think you know, we've dealt with this numerous times. I, I certainly don't wanna see the cars side by side because, you know, two cars quickly turns into four crammed in that garage if we go side by side on the cars. So I, I'd prefer to, to keep them, you know, front to back, two cars, not going side by side, because I think, you know, any more space that opens up in there is gonna be a problem. Okay, anybody else? Any questions?
I have a question. Is there any space outside the garage door to park a car?
No, ma'am. We have, we have a six-foot setback from the front property line, so, and, and we're, no, there's no parking in the front of the property.
Thank you.
I believe I'm not, doctor. I'm not incorrect, Dr. Desai, when you get permits to park in front of the driveway.
You can, actually.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Cabato.
Thank you.
Counsel, do you wanna bring up Mr. Height?
Yes, I'd like to call Charles Height up. He's a planner. He's been before the board many times. He's gonna testify as to the positive and negative criteria for the C variances. Charles?
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, Charles Height, last name spelled H-E-Y-B-T.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Height, good evening. We've qualified you as well. Your license is current?
Still current, yes.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Appreciate that. So I did just wanna refer back to the plans really quickly because there's the frontage, front yard diagram that was prepared by Mr. Cabato, and I just wanna reference that. First and foremost, we do have a wider width of the property, but we, all the properties along this block are actually short in lot depth. So the requirement in the R1 is 100 feet. These all prop, all these properties are 83 feet and a half, 83 and a half feet deep. So there is some essence of hardship here in terms of not providing that 100-foot lot depth that we're directly bumping up into with the rear yard setback variance. The important aspect here for the board is that the rear yard setback requirement is calculated on adding the proposed front yard and, and the proposed rear yard. And the addition of both cannot be less than 35 feet. So the first part is how do you establish the proposed front yard? What we did was took the predominant occurring setback along the block, which you see here, these 6 feet, 2 inches, 6 feet, 2 inches. That's the most predominant, and that's where we kind of located our new front yard proposed. And then the plans were designed, and we are left with a proposed rear yard of approximately 28 feet. So the addition of those two, 22 feet, sorry, the proposed rear yard is 22, 22 feet. So the addition of those two is 28 feet, which is less than the 35 feet permitted. But again, just to also reference that the, the development pattern here on these blocks, while, while most of these properties are all short in lot, lot depth, many of them come with a very shallow rear yard. These are, are less of a setback than what we're proposing. These are approximately 20 feet or less of a setback. We're proposing slightly larger than, than these homes existing in the back here. That's just for, for comparison purposes. So essentially, we do have some, somewhat of merit on the C1 test in that we're an unusually narrow lot in terms of lot depth. Also, in terms of the benefit, we are trying to propose two larger units. The four areas for each unit are about 900, 1,900 square feet. These are geared for family units, large family units. And that I think is a benefit to help diversifying the housing stock. This neighborhood's a little unique in the sense that across the street, or really the path cut runs underneath many of these homes in this neighborhood. And they're, across the street immediately in front of this property is, is an exhaust vent. It's a very large concrete structure that appears to be one, two stories high. And that really kind of dominates and disrupts some of the, the single-family development pattern. But the remainder of the neighborhood is still very much the R1 residential neighborhood. So I think what's being proposed tonight is consistent with that. Based on my review of the aerials and site visit, a lot of the other development on this block do have longer buildings with shorter rear yard spaces. So it's consistent with respect to that. And also, part of this design, as Mr. Cabato mentioned, while we're we're proposing a smaller rear yard space, we're also proposing the, the roof deck on the top, which will help increase that outdoor amenity space for future tenants. So there is some balance there into overall amenity space. With respect to the negative criteria, again, we're proposing two-family units. We are only requesting one, one variance. We do comply with all the other bulk requirements. So I don't think there's any sort of substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. With respect to the general welfare, I, the board typically doesn't often see five-bedroom, five-bath units. But we did, I did ask, and we did confirm that the, the applicant who's proposing this development, this will be their home and, and they, they do need that layout to accommodate their family. And that's what's being proposed tonight. And with respect to the parking, you know, the, I think if, if the planning staff did wanna hone in on addressing the issue, it, it really is actually a requirement for parking for one- and two-family homes, if proposed, to be a minimum of 13 feet wide and 44 feet deep. Those dimensions basically create space for tandem parking. So i- it's very clear. I did actually wanna know on the plans, we reference maximum garage dimensions. It's actually a minimum requirement. That's, that's the minimum dimension, which we actually comply with. So we're 44 feet deep and much wider. But, you know, that's, I think, where you, where you wanna hone in on the issue. Other than that, I don't see there's any sort of substantial impairment or detriment to the public welfare with, with the application and the variance being solved tonight. I complete my testimony.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Height. Anybody, any questions? All right, thank you. I'm sure we'll see you again tonight. Okay, counsel, anything else? Is that your presentation?
No, that's, that's, that's the end of our presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weinberg. At this time, we'll open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from the public?
To your chair, seeing no public, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Mallory, do you have anything to add?
Um, yeah, real quick, I just wanna share the staff report really quick. So this was on the data portal. Can you, can you all see my screen?
Yes, we can.
So I'm just gonna zoom in here. I'm satisfied with the testimony provided by both the planner and the architect, but I do just wanna kind of, in talking about the negative criteria here, so this is an aerial in yellow. Here's our site that we're talking about right now. And this is the transit exhaust vault across the street. So you can see it's a really massive, massive structure. It's somewhere about 15, just 20 feet in height. And it is, takes up, you can see, if you look at the buildings behind, that are kind of faded out here. So it's about four lots width that this structure spans. So what I'd just like to, to acknowledge in, in the benefits of this property being redeveloped are the addition of the new street tree along with the green roof, which if, if you look at just the realities of what is exhausting out of this structure, I think anything we can do on this corridor in particular to improve air quality and to bring green elements to the street is critical. In looking at this actual frontage of Jefferson Avenue, you'll see there's not a single street tree on this run. So we really need to concentrate in areas like this in developing a substantial tree canopy and also green elements within the buildings and properties themselves to kind of improve air quality and, and I mean, you know, we like those things in any application, but, you know, when we're talking about a property across from the ball, I think it has a lot of merit as positive criteria in considering the variance. Other than that, I shared this report with Mr. Weinberg. We're proposing just standard conditions here, which are the street treaties to comply with Jersey City Forestry standards, no changes of materials without discussion with staff and the board, and an affidavit from the architect of record that the construction project is consistent with the final plans. So with that, staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Mallory. And Mr. Weinberg, do you have any problem complying?
No, no, I reviewed the, the staff recommendations and we accept them. And
Okay, thanks.
We're approved.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P20-125 as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Okay, Dr. Gonzalez?
I.
Commissioner Gangadin?
I.
Commissioner Horton?
I, although I do agree with Commissioner Torres that, uh, I think it's the best option for parking with a double garage, but I think our hands are a little behind the situation. You know, it's just a consideration for the future.
Dr. Desai?
Uh. I know that area so well, and around that New Jersey Transit, there is a guy who always builds so much green vegetables around there. And I see all the houses, they have a lot of greenery's over there, but you know, I would say I for this.
Commissioner Tocord?
I.
Commissioner Torres?
I just don't, um, agree with the tandem parking. I agree with the, Mr. Height said that the minimum measurements of the garages and that is for, of the garage, that is not the issue. The issue is that they go to separate parts. The units, and we just leave them for the one unit. If they agree and the people get along with each other, they want to let out the space, that's up to them. But we needed to a area where it could cause problems. Problem for the city, cause problem for the police department. And I don't agree with the tandem parking. So I like the project, and I love the rooftop. We're gonna have to vote no on this one.
And Chairman Langston?
Yeah, um, I, I think the, the case is there for the I'm sorry, the case is there for the variances. Yeah, I know the block well. And I, I'm really excited to see, you know, five-bedroom units. It's one of the great things about the Heights. It's, you know, the varied housing there is, you know, I love it. This is why I live here. So, um, yeah, I'm gonna vote I. This is a good project. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, that's six in favor, one opposed. Motion carries with conditions.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to, to thank the board and the planning department for all their help and consideration in this matter. It's really appreciated and makes it much more pleasant to, to visit with the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weinberg. Okay, let's move on to case P20-125 is a preliminary and final major site plan for 134 Newark Avenue. Mike, are you okay with one more application before we get a break?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Should I go ahead?
Yeah, you're here for Ron, right?
Yeah, yes, I am. I'm just, you know, the screen keeps disappearing on me, because it was joining me.
That's okay.
Pick me out.
That's okay, we got you.
All right, good, thank you. My name is Joseph Cowda. I'm from the law firm of Schuman Hand Lamargulies, representing Ranny Management LLC tonight. They seek preliminary and final site plan approval. Basically renovate its property at 134 Newark Avenue. It's Block 14404, Lot 21. Just before going any further, I'd like to confirm the board's jurisdiction. This, before the last meeting, I submitted the affidavit of proof of service with the certified mail receipts, and then also an affidavit of publication from the Jersey Journal showing that notice was published on January 9th, and I believe that was the same day that the notices were mailed out.
Thank you. I am in receipt of the affidavit of publication, proof of mailing with respect to the application at 134 Newark Avenue here in the city of Jersey City. Chairman, I find that all is in order. We can mark those as A1 for purposes of the record. Counsel, is your entire team up on the screen?
Uh, yes, I see Gerard Schubert is the architect and I'll just be him tonight, as my understanding, there's no variances necessary.
That is my understanding as well. Chairman, let's go ahead then have Mr. Schubert qualified and let's get his testimony started.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Hey Gerard, I just need to swear you in, okay?
Sure.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Gerard Schubert. G-E-R-A-R-D, last name Schubert, S-C-H-U-B-E-R-T, as in Thomas.
Thank you.
Mr. Schubert, good evening. Is your license current in the state of New Jersey tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Schubert. Can you share on the screen the site plans?
Sure.
Because I, I wanted to make the board aware that earlier today we forwarded a different page, A3, to the architectural plans. That was just in light of planning staff's comments. And I forwarded this Baptiste And I forwarded this Baptiste earlier.
Okay, let's uh
do is
counsel.
What we're gonna do is we're gonna mark that new sheet as A two for the record, but that is sheet A three. Uh, and that's contained within the set that's up on the screen now, which is the full set.
Correct, correct, it's actually the last page of this set and it was only it was a slight change just to show the building materials.
And Mr. Schubert, that has a revised date of today's date on it or couple of days ago for the case may be? Yes, today's date is on the bottom. Okay, so last revised February second. Correct. Thank you, sir, we'll mark that, that is A two for the record. But go ahead and take us through the submission. Sure. Well, there was a photo here, but no, it's not loading. Um, I think I have another one here, this is our building, one thirty-four Newark. It's an existing building that we're leaving alone, the top four, I'll just leave that photo on. The top four floors are vacant, completely vacant. I think there's like one partition wall even hanging in there, otherwise they're completely empty, on the bottom we have commercial space. Uh, the client would like to convert these top floor four units into eight residential units. If we go back to the plan. So we have a basement, first for commercial space. And then typical floor layouts, this is the typical, this is the typical shape of the building. What we're proposing to do is put eight residential units in. The basement will be used for storage and garbage collection and bike storage, we're going to add an elevator. We also have a egress corridor to the back of the building, there's an easement agreement among other properties in order to provide two means of egress for this building, so we have our entrance off Newark Avenue and as well as the exit for the alleyway in the back. You have commercial space in the first floor, which is getting adjusted in order to fit the new elevator and stairs and egress. The upper floors, typical floor plate is two units halfway down the middle here, two bedroom, one bath. And then also on the top, we're going to locate a roof deck, if you quite wanted to do a roof deck, so we have a stair bulkhead as well as an elevator bulkhead. That is the only exterior work that's being done to the building as far as modifications. And that was the reason for the updated sheet. Because we needed materials for the for these bulkheads. This is the existing building, the existing facade. It's on Newark at the pedestrian thoroughfare there, so there's no vehicle access to to the street unless the ball are just moved. On the right side here, we can see where the additional bulkheads are going and our materials, since it's a roof deck. The visible side of the roof deck would be horizontal E pay rain screen system res on the left side, which is in the property line. I would do a cement, proposing a cement stucco finish. I know you're gonna ask now before I even say, is the bulkhead viewable, visible from the street? Here is a street view. This is our building here, this gray box in the back is the existing bulkhead for the building, there's a pop-up bulkhead for an elevator, a freight elevator that used to be there but is no longer there, so that will
Mr. Schubert, sorry to interrupt, I'm just not sure if that's popping up on the screen because I believe you showed me a couple of weeks ago this picture. Are we just looking at page A three now? Or do you have a street view?
Do you have a street, you don't see my photo, my screen now?
We see your screen, but it's the
It's the PDF.
Yeah, I don't have I can't see what sheet number it is.
Let me
Counsel's picture is over the corner where the the sheet number is.
Eight three?
Yeah, A three, there you go, we got it.
Here we go, this is our building here.
This is
four floors. This gray box is an existing bulkhead on our building. Which will be removed and replaced with a new elevator bulkhead. And that part will be, you know, the top of it is gonna be seen by from the street, this is from this location. Right, only over the two-story building though. Correct, that's one small window, then I went to the other side of the street, here is it from the other side. Uh, that's our building there and it's the bulkheads on the other side of the building, so it shouldn't be seen at all. So for purposes of the record, the photo that we're looking at now looks to be taken from the corner of Newark and Grove Street, looking back towards the subject property, which appears to be about four buildings in. And the bulkhead is not visible from this vantage point again on the corner of Newark and Grove. That's the, is that the north side of the street? That is the south side of the street. South side. Yeah. Right, going the other way. Correct, looking northwest.
And the ground floor tenant is HR block, correct, just to identify in the picture.
Yeah, this is we're Sure, but if you could just point out the mechanicals and if that'll be they're gonna be up on the roof, if they're gonna be screened, whatever the case may be. Though, the mechanicals are in the back behind that bulkhead that we saw, it's just condensers for the air conditioning. And that's the extent of the mechanical boatwork. There's small, the, you know, not even three feet high. I'm not showing any screening on the left side, but that can certainly be added easily enough.
Yeah, is um I mean, that'll be visible from neighboring buildings. So yeah, maybe if we could get some screening along that side.
Yep.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Schubert?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you, um. Actually, the question you answered, that was gonna be my second question, my first question was the finish on the elevator bulkhead, you said it's stucco, is that a smooth finish stucco?
Yes, just on the
Okay. Okay, and counsel, I don't know if you know, the applicants thought of this, but maybe you could have a conversation with with the city mural program, that that might be a great spot for a mural, it would be much better to look at a mural than a a gray stucco finish on the roof. That's it for me, I have no other questions, anybody, anything?
Would you?
Any questions, anybody for Mr. Schubert? Okay, thank you, Mr. Schubert.
Welcome, thank you.
Counsel, anything else from you?
I have nothing further, just to sum up that we're here to seek major site plan approval because we're over the ten thousand square foot threshold and we're not seeking any variances and we're open to all the comments and we'll accept the comments and suggestions of the planning and we'll discuss with the applicant about a mural on the bulkhead.
Okay, thank you.
With screening those mechanicals on the roof and you will discuss the mural program with your client.
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody here from the public that wishes to comment? If you'd like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. We do have a call-in, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Watch this. Mr. Salgian, can you mute yourself, please? Thank you.
And just to confirm, that's Gene Daly again, right?
This is, yes, this is she.
All right, and just confirm for me that you understand you are still under oath.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Daly, once, once again, we have five minutes for you and you're sworn in and under oath already tonight.
Correct. Um, I, again, I don't need five minutes, but thank you for your time, and I think actually the mural is a brilliant idea. I'm not an architect, so I'm just going from what I I saw on the plans, and the only reason I bring this up is because I rent in an old, old building that would not comport to today's standards of habitable rooms having windows, et cetera. Um, and from what I understand, quickly reading, is that if the room doesn't have any window, there has to be a certain amount of lumens of light and certain amount of air circulation. So I don't know if any accommodations were made for that. My one concern was also the stairway egress two. In the sense that you have to go all the way down to the basement, then along a corridor and then up back to that alley. And I wasn't sure if there, if that alley was un-unobstructed. Or does it go out to the the back street, I guess that would be First Street or something. Um, so my just concern was for those tenants because I'm in a similar situation. Um, and I guess the last thing really was how is the treatment of that middle window in the front gonna be handled because you have a wall, a vertical wall, splitting down that middle window. Um, and obviously I I think because of the historic exterior, you can't really change the exterior, but how is that gonna be, how is that intersection going to be made? The wall that is running vertically down that middle window.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Daly.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Schubert, do you want to address that?
Sure, uh, let's start with the window, yeah, thanks for picking
Sure.
That will be adjusted in the final plan. It was more to show an equal equal, but yeah, we can move it off to the left, we'll jog it so that it's not bisecting the window. Regards to daylight, the daylight, the windows are on the bedrooms, there's, there are, yes, those are no windows in the middle. But we do have the adjusted the appropriate lumens and we'll have the HVAC which serves the center areas, which would be the bathroom which doesn't necessarily need a window, it'll be vented. The fire, the hallway for the common hallway as well as the kitchens. But the bedrooms themselves will have all the natural light. Regarding the second means of egress, there is an easement agreement. And we can provide if I wanna see it. That guarantees an alley to a public right of way of sufficient width from the back of this building from that first floor all the way to to a public's right of way. Uh, so there's no way that that can ever be developed, there'll always be that there will always be that egress that means of egress for this building. And it's there now, there's an existing door there now for the commercial space as their second means. So it's just, we just had to get away, needed a way to get the tenants to that door and rather than go to cut to the commercial space, we cut to the basement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schubert, um. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a common thing that we see with that that egress hallway. Could we, I don't know if planning has it or not, but um does planning have a copy of the easement?
I don't believe that was filed with the submission.
Okay, um, you know what, I can't believe we haven't done this before, we should probably make this policy, if we're talking about the easement. Let's make sure that, you know, we don't need it the night of the meeting, but let's make sure that planning staff has it and will mark it as an exhibit.
And Chairman, it should be included, counsel, is it in the chain of title, recorded right in the deed, is it a separate easement document, do you know?
We'll have to check on that because I'm I just had the survey.
I have it right in front of me.
Okay.
So it's identified on the survey?
Well, here, wait. Mr. Schubert, do you wanna bring it up? You said you have it in front of you.
Yeah. I'm gonna share a screen. Sorry, I'm trying to find the Can you see this?
Yes, we can.
Resolution of the Board of Adjustment of the City of Jersey City for the Bay City Condo LLC. Yes. Okay. Uh, so this is actually, so when this address was developed part of the resolution was egress, so if we scroll down here. Rear and side yard easements number ten, for purposes of fire, immediate emergency egress shall be granted to owners of adjacent property at one forty Newark. And two twenty-nine Bay Street, where does it say? Now go back and it says it'll be recorded in the Hudson County Register and the document shall be submitted to the Division of Planning. There you go. Do we know if that happened? Yes. Okay. If we have, this is here. All right, so I can see that it was in a resolution of the Board of Adjustment for a neighboring property owner and was supposed to be recorded and submitted to the city of plan, uh, the city planning division. We should have that on file, but it should also be filed in the county registrar's office, so Chairman, to me, it should exist and it should be both in our office and recorded at the registrar's office. And I am sure that it is in that Bay Street Board of Adjustment file. Uh, we probably should cross-reference them with the properties they benefit for purposes of of our files if we don't, so.
Okay, so do we wanna add that resolution as an exhibit?
We're gonna mark that free for purposes of the record and then counsel, I am gonna ask that you follow up with a copy from the registrar's office showing that that deed was actually recorded in the registrar's office. And to follow up with planning to make sure that that we do have it on file, it should have been done by the applicant on Bay Street before the Board of Adjustment. I don't know. When was that resolution? Oh. Mister application, two thousand and six? Two thousand and seven, maybe.
Uh, two thousand and seven.
So Mr. Harrington handled that application, which makes me feel really good that it was done. But we can track it down, Chairman, it's, it's not a problem, obviously, we see Mr. Harrington regularly, I think he might be next and if for whatever reason it slipped through the cracks and didn't wind up at planning, we'll get it.
Okay, and counsel, maybe we could you know, we could have an answer on that before I, or you know, when I go in to to sign the signature plans.
Okay.
Okay, so we are still in public comment, if anybody else wants to comment. Please raise your hand, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, seeing no public, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is officially closed, Erica, do you wanna wrap us up here?
Uh, yeah, so I've provided a staff report to the applicant's team on January twenty-eighth. Like they've already addressed some of the plans based on some of my comments. Other than the standard conditions that I made. I would just include provide that the applicant also provides a copy of the easement agreement, we'll also check our records at the planning office. We'll also check our records at the planning office, um, discuss having, uh, a mural on the elevator bulkhead, uh, with the applicant, and also having some screening material for the mechanical, if it was located on a roof.
Okay, thanks, Erica. Uh, Counsel, you already talked about the screening and the mural, uh, are you okay to comply with staff's report?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve case P20-125, presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Chairman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner of the Corps?
Aye.
Mr. Gangit in?
Aye.
Aye.
Torres Lee?
Uh, his power went out for a second, he should be back in there, if he's not. We, uh...
Okay, um, I'll just do Chairman Linkson.
Okay, I'm an aye.
Okay, so motion carries.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mike, do you want to take, uh, 10 right now?
I think now's a great time.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, uh, let's take a 10-minute break, everybody. Uh, when we come back, we will, uh, hear the review and discussion of the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan. Okay, uh, it's 7:22, we'll be back at 7:32. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, we're just on a break, Eddie.
Want some break?
Yeah, we're on a break.
Oh, okay.
10 minutes.
Okay, cool.
All right.
Yeah, I had a blackout.
Yeah, Linkson said so.
All right, good, I'm back on, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Time is 7:32, and being a man of my word, I came back. Counsel, good evening.
Evening. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, but I'm just not getting it out of my headphones here. My wife's gonna be angry about that.
Um, no.
All right, let's call the, uh, review and discussion of, uh, amendment to the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan. Remap the plan to include the entire church and school lots of the Roman Catholic Church. Uh, this was initiated by Sacred Heart Roman Catholic Church and the Roman Catholic Church Diocese of Newark. Formal action may be taken.
Okay, uh, thanks, Mister Chairman, for the record, Charles Harrington, on behalf of the applicant. And as what we are, uh, here tonight for is to, uh, try to fix a mapping error that, um, we, uh, believe that the entire Sacred Heart campus, including the, the church and the school, should have been included as part of the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan and its, uh, predecessor redevelopment plan. Um, initially, um, we, we think that because we reviewed the prior blight study, uh, for this area, uh, and the prior block and lots, uh, were, were, um, were reviewed and, and determined to be blighted, uh, at that time, uh, it referenced the greater campus area. Uh, this is something that we had reviewed, uh, with the planning staff as well, um, uh, because we, we were kind of, we were looking to see if there was something, a potential, uh, uh, project or renovations of, of the Sacred Heart campus. Uh, and at that time, what could we do to fix, um, or bring this into the redevelopment plan? Because right now, it's split zone between the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan and the R1 residential zone. So upon further investigation by, by, uh, uh, the planning department and in our office, uh, it was our determination, um, that we believe it was a mapping error. Um, and I, I do have, uh, I mean, I submitted, uh, my letter in support of this, and, um, I did submit some maps, I, I think if I show you this, you kind of see, let me see if I can, um, share this one map, I don't know, what do I have to do, a little, uh, this will be the first time I'm doing it.
The bottom of this screen, is it a shared screen? It should, I think it's the same, or is it at the top, the bottom?
Airscreen, okay.
Mister Harrington, if I understand what you're saying, though, it's that there was a change in the block and lot designation, and somehow it wasn't essentially picked up on the map itself?
I think that, I think that was part of it, and then when you see, the, the blight study references the entire Sacred Heart campus. But when you look at the map and the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan, it just goes straight across, um, along MLK. And what it does, it actually splits the church lot in half, uh, so it really, you know, kind of, it, it shows that something went awry here. Um, and, and then when you do, do the, the research and the due diligence, you see that the whole campus was, was referenced in the blight study. Uh, so we believe that the intent was to have the whole campus in there, and that the map should be fixed to reflect that.
And Mister Harrington, did you review this with, with city planning, and do they concur with, with what your statement?
Yes, we did, and I believe they, they do concur, that's, that's why we're here.
Sharon, I don't know that we have to go much further than that, as much as I'd love to watch Mister Harrington share a screen.
Intensive delay, with my career expertise.
Um, I, I mean, you know, we've reviewed it, um, I just think for public comment, we should actually, you know, have it, I have it on the screen real quick. I know it's a, it's a minor thing here, but...
I can share it if needed. Have it open, I'll do that.
That would be great.
How's that, how's that sound, Counsel?
That'd be great. Big relief. Right, so, I mean, this, this is kind of really what the, the crux of it, that I wanted to show the board, and anyone looking at it, you'll see that what I highlighted there, uh, is the Sacred Heart campus. And you'll see the, the dark line, um, that cuts through from Bidwell Avenue to Bayview Avenue in the front, on the, the western side of the campus, that cuts the, the campus, uh, uh, in two parts. Uh, the smaller frontage, um, which is a school, and the church is in the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan. And the back of that, uh, is, which is also part of the church, um, and the parking lot for the church is, is, uh, within the R1 zone. So this whole area was discussed, um, in the blight study. But when they mapped it, and I don't know if it was because the, the initial Monticello, not Monticello, it was the Martin Luther King, uh, Drive redevelopment plan, um, previously, um, this was, the campus was not included. And then I think that just carried over into the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan. So we're, we're seeking to fix that, so that that entire highlighted, uh, area would be part of the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan area.
Okay, and none of the properties behind it, correct, just the highlighted area?
Just the highlighted, they're, they're only the properties that are, uh, owned by Sacred Heart and the Church Diocese of Newark.
Okay, and those are the same block and lot numbers as the ones that are included, or are they separate block and lot numbers?
I'm, I'm not sure I follow that. They're, they're separate, they're, I mean, what you're looking at there are a separate, uh, lots within the same...
Okay.
But those blocks were originally part of the designation study area?
That, that's correct.
And have they subsequently been, changed the blocks and lots?
They, they have, and that's, that's in my, uh, submittal letter.
Right.
To the planning, which it, it identifies the prior designations and the current designations, and, and uses within the campus.
And Mister Harrington, obviously, as you and I both see, uh, when they, when they start changing the block and lot designations, these kinds of things happen, because they, they just changed the block and lot designation on the maps, and somehow, it doesn't carry over, and then that mistake is repeated for the next 10 years or whatever.
That's, that's right, and I think that, yeah, there was some kind of mix-up here along the line.
Right.
Okay, uh, that's it, Counsel?
That's it, yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right, anybody, any questions? Okay, thank you, um. Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment? If you could, please raise your hand, if you'd like to comment. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Mister Chairman, seeing no public, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Erica, is this yours? I don't know who's this is.
Yes, this one is mine, as Chuck mentioned. He did meet with staff and we did discuss this and it does really just seem as if it is an error to not include the entire property in the redevelopment plan. So this is something that staff supports.
Okay, thank you, Erica.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair.
Now, Mr. Langston, just before we go to, to a vote on the matter, that plan that we had up on the screen, the map, that was in the submittal. Who would be redrawing the map going forward so that we, we have the correct map on file?
City planning will be responsible for that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept and approve the review and discussion of amendment to the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan to remap the plan to include the entire church and school lots of the Roman Catholic Church. It's initiated by Sacred Heart Roman Catholic Church and forward to city council with a favorable recommendation for formal adoption.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded for a favorable recommendation.
Hey, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangitton.
Aye.
Commissioner Decore.
Aye.
Mr. Morton.
Aye.
Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Ms. Porras.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye, council, I apologize, I thought there was going to be a little more involved in this and I really apologize, we should have gotten this in on last meeting.
That's, that's okay.
All right, thank you. While we have you, let's call case P20-114 is a preliminary and final major site plan with a C variance for 900 Bergen Avenue.
Yes, so moving right along for the record, Charles Harrington, on behalf of the applicant. There, your notice is provided in connection with this application, so I'd ask they be reviewed and marked into evidence.
Thank you, council, Mr. Chairman, I am to receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application, 900 Bergen here in the city. The notice was made for the prior here on January 19th and was carried to the night with no further notice requirement. All those appear to be in order, so we can go ahead and mark those as A1 for the record.
Okay, thank you, council.
Okay, thank you. So for this application, I will have three witnesses, but I believe the project is pretty straightforward, so don't but um, this is in the Journal Square redevelopment plan area. Actually in Zone 7, which is the deco zone, so it's something that you, you don't really see much before this board, a lot of it is, you know, right on the square, closer to the square. And, you know, one of the purposes of that zone is to preserve and retain the early 20th century facades. So as part of this project, you'll see that the existing building and facade stays and then you go vertical. That's consistent with the intent of this zone. And this is a little unique in that it's a through lot in that there is a little dead end street behind it called Dick Street. And so you'll, you'll see how, how they've, we've worked that into the design with the retail in the front and then you have your residential in the rear. So it is proposed to be eight stories, 50 units with retail. We are asking for one, one deviation here with regard to the height, not asking for the height for additional stories. It's, it's, it's really because of the, the overall construction, which we'll, we'll address. Otherwise, we are, we are conforming beyond that. So I have Gabriel Gornelli, I don't know if she's up here yet, she's out there. But other she is, so I'm asking, Gabriel is our civil engineer and she's just gonna present the, the site so that the board is familiar with with the project and I also note that my client did meet with a lot of the, the community groups within the area. So this has been vetted throughout the process.
So, Gabrielle. I just need to swear in before we get started, right?
Sure.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
My name is Gabrielle Gornelli, G A B R I E L L E. Gornelli, G O R N E L L I.
Thank you.
And, Ms. Gornelli, have we qualified you previously? I can't remember.
Yes.
Okay, and is your license current tonight?
Yes, it is.
And it's in New Jersey, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Okay.
Okay, based on that, Ms. Gornelli, if you could take it away and just give a brief overview of the site for the board?
Sure. Let me just share my screen. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes, we can, yes.
Okay, so, um, this site, we're, we're 900 Bergen Avenue, Block 10701 Lot 4. We're, we're along Bergen Avenue, as Chuck mentioned, we are a through lot. The street behind us is Dick Street, which is a dead end street. And the site is on Bergen Avenue between Academy Street and New Kirk Street. We're about a quarter mile from the Journal Square path station. The lot itself is approximately 50 feet along Bergen Avenue by 150 feet. And the existing property has a three story commercial building on the site. As Chuck mentioned, we're in the Journal Square. 2060 redevelopment plan, Zone 7, the deco zone, which encourages the maintaining of certain elements of the, of the building, which the architects will get more into. As Chuck mentioned, we generally comply with the, with the redevelopment plan. Minor deviation, which again, will the architect and our planner will get into. To go to the site plan itself, there really isn't much from an engineering perspective, we only have about 50 feet of frontage along Bergen and along Dick in the back. So Dick Street, as Chuck mentioned, we're utilizing this for, for our back of house loading. There's a residential lobby in the back and then there is retail in, in the front in, which is encouraged by the plan. We are proposing a new street light, which is in conformance with the Jersey City standard light, just the typical light that you see in this area, it's, it's along Bergen Avenue on both sides of our site. And, and we're redoing the sidewalk, but, but other than that, it, it's mainly, you know, an architectural presentation. We did get comment letters from JCMUA and Jersey City Engineering, which we've reviewed and we generally can comply with those comment letters and we'll work with the agencies to get those addressed. Oh.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gornelli, any questions, anybody? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, and I'm gonna next move on to our architect is Vincent Marchetto. Who, this is, Vincent has worked on many projects here in Jersey City, but this is his first time testifying before this board, so we are going to qualify him as, he can tell you all about himself and then we'll move on. Vincent, you're muted right now.
Can you hear me now?
I can't, alright.
I just need to swear your name, alright?
Sure.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, my name is Vincent Marchetto, V I N C E N T M A R C H E T T O.
Thank you.
Mr. Marchetto.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Go, go ahead, council, I'm sorry.
Well, this is Mr. Marchetto's first appearance before the board, so I was gonna ask him just to briefly give his professional educational experience and state that you are a licensed architect in New Jersey and that it is in effect.
Great, so I, I received a Bachelor of Architecture from Northeastern University in 2012. I received a Master of Architecture from the Technical University of Delft in the Netherlands in 2015. I have a valid New Jersey architecture license, which was effective of May 4th, 2020. I'm a member of the American Institute of Architects and I had six years of professional working experience at MHS Architects. And beyond that, I was a board, a former board member of the Journal Square Community Association from 2017 to 2020. So I'm very familiar with the context and the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Marchetto, you're qualified and I, I think you've testified in front of us before, just as a member of the public, that's all.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified as an architect then.
Great.
Great. All right, Vincent, if you could share your screen and walk the board through the proposal?
Yes. All right. Can everyone see my screen?
We can.
Great, all right, so we, maybe we can mark this as an exhibit. A1, this is a photograph.
This would be A2.
A2, excuse me. This is a photograph looking north of Bergen Avenue at the site. At the end of Bergen Avenue, you'll see the Journal Square Transportation Center, the new Journal Square Towers. And as you come down here on Bergen Avenue, Avenue, you'll see this strip of beautiful art deco buildings that were built at the, in the 1920s. And you can see they have nice ornament on them. They use materials such as limestone and, and other sort of detailing. And then our site is just still in the deco zone, which ends here, it's the last building down Bergen in the deco zone. But it's a little bit different than its neighbors and that happens to be because this building was built in the 1930s. So in the roaring twenties, they used much more expensive building materials, but during the Great Depression, they built a more modest, modern deco building and that's what we have here. And the intent of the plan is to preserve this facade and we're going to comply with that. And then on, on top of this building, you can set back 15 feet and build a new building that goes up to eight stories. And so, and, and that's really what the intent of the project is, so let me go to the plans here. All right, so here's my cover sheet, you can see Gavin mentioned before that we're a through lot, fronting on Bergen and Dick. And if you see here on the Bergen app, this is the Bergen app facade as you see today with all the signage and so forth. We're proposing to, what we're going to do is we're gonna clean up this facade, preserve it using the existing materials, re-point the brick, remove some of this extraneous signage and pieces of old signs that have been removed. And, and we're gonna replace some of the win, the, the windows to match the three paint nature of the original building. So that will be a nice addition and we're also going to upgrade the storefront for whoever the next tenant will be using new signage. So, and then on, up top, you, you're gonna have them, we're gonna use, it's gonna be a little bit more modern, but at the same time, use some building elements that mimic or pick up on some of these art deco buildings that are adjacent to it. So you see the, you have these triangular window headers at the top as well as a cornice. So the top is required to be 75% glass and the bottom is masonry, so there's gonna be a nice differ, difference between what's new and what's old. So let me just go down here, I'm gonna skip ahead, I'm gonna go right to the, the ground floor plan. On the ground floor, what we've done, being that was a through lot, we had the opportunity to move the lobby of the residential building over to Dick Street and let Bergen Avenue be primarily retail. So this will be nice and porous and public and the more quiet Dick Street, dead end street will be the retail entrance as well as for loading, move-ins and so, and, and other, and other things like that. So I think this is a, a great way to organize the spaces to maximize the, the, the public nature and quality of Bergen Avenue. I'm gonna go down now, the building has an existing basement, so we're proposing to keep the basement. And what you're gonna do, we're gonna put some mechanicals up here along Bergen Avenue where they'll connect with the mechanics in the street, there's gonna be some storage down here for the retail space, so they can store some of their, some of the goods and things down here. There's gonna be storage lockers as well as an amenity space for the residents of the building. All right, so let me move up to the typical residential floors. So let me just give you a quick statistics here. So in this building, we're gonna have 50 units, 45 of those units are gonna be one bedrooms and five are gonna be two bedrooms. So on the ground floor, we have these, we, we have these longer studios, which face Bergen Avenue on the, on the second and third level. And you're gonna see here, as you pop up at the fourth floor, these step back and that will give some relief from the new building behind the historic facade and they'll have these two private terraces here. The building is single loaded, so the south of us, we've faced, the units in the interior of the building are facing south and our neighbor to the south is in the historic preservation zone and we did that, number one, to pick, so that the units benefit from all the sunlight that comes from the north and number two, we, we know that the views won't be blocked because the neighbor to the south is in a historic preservation zone. Going up, this is units up going to the eighth floor. On the, on the roof, what we have here is an amenity space on the eastern portion of the building, which will have views of New York City and then on the western part of the roof, what we've done is we placed mechanics. And we'll have a small little rooftop room here with elevator access. And then let me continue on now to the elevations. So here you can see an elevation of Bergen Avenue, you can see the existing condition as it is now. And then what we're proposing, obviously you can see the, the big difference from the street will be this new box that gets put up on top of the existing facade, but set back. Let me flip, on Dick Street, we're gonna do something sort of similar, we'd like to keep the base in a masonry brick and then up above have metal panels. It wouldn't be a setback on Dick Street, but we wanted to keep that balance of having masonry on the ground and metal and glass up above. So this is, you're looking at a side elevation, this is the south elevation, oh, this is the elevation that has all the, all the windows and this will face onto Bergen Square. So you can see that there. This is the north elevation. Our neighbor, a neighboring building will go here and that building is in the same deco zone, so they will also at some point be able to build up against our building and this, this stucco facade will be blocked. And then finally, let me see, yeah, right here, we have the, a building section, I wanna use this as a way to talk about how we arrived at the building height. What really kind of sets the building height is, is, is the existing facade. Those windows have to line up with our floors, essentially, we couldn't put new floors in the middle of those windows. So what we've done is we've put the floor locations in the right location to match with the historic facade. And then up above that, we've used the minimum floor to ceiling height that's permitted in the plan, so we're not trying, we're not really asking for any height that, that we, we wouldn't need. And that brings our complete building height total to 92 feet. I believe the permitted amount is 85 feet. So it, within the 10% that's permitted as a C variance. And let me continue here, so this is a blow up detail, just showing the existing facade at grade, some notes about how it's going to be preserved. And then again, a blow up detail showing Dick Street and how that elevation at the ground level might look. And then finally, a blow up elevation showing the um the tops of the building, both at Bergen Avenue and at Dick Street, um, and showing the difference in the the metal panel coloring. And then finally, just come back here. Pull you to here. And this is a rendering of what that structure would look like in its context. So you can see the um historic facade is preserved, it's cleaned up. We were creating a new storefront. And the new new building up above is set back fifteen feet from the front facade. And now before I just finish, I just want to mention that in these last final days, as we were tweaking the project, we 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 made some very minor upgrades to the facade, I just wanted to put on the record, um, and hopefully we could do that, and then a and finalize that as part of the resolution. Is that all right, Chuck?
Yes.
Okay, so let me just, I just one exhibit here, what we'd like to do is when we're looking at this.
Mr. Marchetto, is this a new detail?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
So let's mark this. Mr. Harrington, I'm up to A four.
A four, I thought there's A three.
Three, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And these are a series of sheets, uh, Mr. Marchetto, right?
Yes.
So, so could you identify uh the sheets that will be part of A three?
Um, sure, it's gonna be A six, um, A eight, A eleven, and A thirteen.
Thank you.
And Mr. Marchetto, do those have a revision date on them?
They do.
And if you could just give that to us for the record?
The date is uh January twenty-ninth of two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you.
So, very quickly, we added some more detail to the top of the building, added a more decorative metal panel as part of the inset uh of this building, we feel that uh being in the Art Deco zone, we could, we could adding a little bit more decorative element to the facade would be a benefit. Also, we've noted that on the previous design, we showed a fabric awning above the storefront, and we'd like to change that to a a two-foot projected canopy that has a little bit of Art Deco styling. And then, let me show you on the side, on the side of the building, what we wanted to do was on these fiber cement panels, the jointing pattern, we wanted to 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 change to start to mimic that triangular tops that you'll find on the Bergen Avenue facade, so some of that, so instead of having just a blank panel, some, all this jointing starts to pick up on the Art Deco features of the building. And then, these are just blowups of those details, you can see on A eleven, you can see a blow up of where that canopy will be. Um, and then same here on A thirteen, you can see a blow up of uh somehow some the the detail will be added to the top of this cornice, and I, they're just small details, but I think they'll make a big difference, and we just wanted to get them on the record.
Thank you, uh, Vincent, and just for the record too, did didn't you, you did present these to the local community groups, is that correct?
That's correct.
Then who were they?
We presented to the Hilltop Community Association, the Journal Square Community Association, and the Bergen Square Historical Society.
And did you receive favorable comments?
We did.
Any, any questions for Mr. Marchetto?
Um, yeah, I do have actually just, uh, well, I I don't actually know if they're for Mr. Marchetto or or you, Chuck. Um, are we going for a signage approval tonight, or is that? Is that just for uh, you know, detail to show us what's gonna be there?
I believe that's just a detail, if any, any signage would be conforming, or we we have to come back uh for a minor site plan for the signage.
Okay, okay, and is that awning conforming?
Yes, the the canopy.
I'm sorry, canopy, um. Okay, yeah, that's, that's it for me, I don't have any other questions, uh, anybody else, any questions?
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Doctor.
Uh, I want to know how to enter the residential area and the safety of people going in there, and what is the way to go to this residential area?
Okay, great, um, so let me just go to my maybe. Okay, if you look at my site plan that I have on my cover sheet, the building has two fronts, it fronts on Bergen Avenue, and it fronts on this small dead end street behind New, behind Bergen Avenue off of Newkirk called Dick Street. So the entrance through the residential area will be off of Dick Street as you're seeing right here, and then, which allows Bergen Avenue to be an entrance for the retail.
Mr. Harrington, I assume that on Dick Street will have the proper illumination for that.
Yeah, ab- absolutely.
So I I've shown on my plan here some uh light fixtures that you'll see and some lighting spreads, so right in front of the of of our of our building will be illuminated properly.
And how about the street lighting?
Um, maybe Gabby, do you wanna discuss the the street lighting?
Or, yeah, we're not, we're not proposing any any new streetlights on on Dick Street, we are proposing one on Bergen Avenue. But we we can certainly look at the sidewalk on Dick Street and and confirm that, you know, the illumination levels are sufficient.
And there is street lighting on Dick Street.
Existing, yeah.
Yeah, and we understand that the the concern through that that of that question, uh, Dr. DeSai, we're uh absolutely, we wanna make sure that the lighting is adequate, so that it's it's a safe passage to this, to this residential en- entrance, uh, and that it's it's not a dark alley, so that that is definitely something that the applicant will will make sure is is appropriate.
Mr. Harrington, I do have a question, uh, and and it may be for Mr. Marchetto with respect to, I believe Mr. Marchetto indicated that uh, there was a presentation to the Historic Society, there was some talk of, is is this considered a historic building?
I don't believe so, it's just, but it is like the the um, the zoning requires you to maintain this facade. Um, so that's not, there's no specific designation, um, but the purpose is to retain and preserve these facades as part of the development, um, and I believe that, uh, you know, Vincent and the team went out um to to present to them, um, because of uh the, you know, the issues related to keeping this facade and and respecting it and how how to make it more prominent uh during the construct, the 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 other, the rest of the development.
Now, I understood that with respect to the buildings to uh next to this property, which has the beautiful Art Deco facade. We're, what is this facade considered? I think Mr. Marchetto touched upon it, is nineteen thirty?
Yes, so this facade also character is quite characterized in the zoning as an Art Deco facade. Hmm. To be preserved.
Really?
Yeah.
I, I know, we we initially, we initially thought the same, but that's the zoning requires, um, but it's not, yeah, it's not historically designated, so uh, you know, we just followed the plan.
Uh, Chairman, I don't know, I'll defer to you, if it was the the building next to it, yeah, I wanna preserve that, if we could make this look like that, I I'd be much happier, but what do I know?
My client would be a lot happier, too.
Uh, yeah, I I wish that was the case here.
In all seriousness, Mr. Harrington, your client would want it to look like the Art Deco facade next to it?
You mean, to keep, what you mean, to to maintain this this facade right here, the existing?
To, to make it look like the Art Deco building next to it, to me, the building next to it, and I just can't see what what says on it, I think the one twenty-four hour fitness. That's an Art Deco building to me.
Right.
Those two bills, yes, Mr. Marchetto.
Yeah, I, my, I think my client, if he if he had his choice, would prefer to replace the facade with with something you know, more, you know, similar in design, but that's not what the zone provides for right now.
Okay, um.
I mean, we we hear you, and then
Yeah.
we consider, you know, prior to construction, maybe discuss that further with planning and and come back to the board, but uh at this point, this you, this is what we're proposing, that's consistent with the plan, but um that it's certainly something that I think my client will leave tonight, depending on what happens with, to uh to review that further.
Yeah, I think, I know I'd be open to that discussion, but um you know, this is what's in front of us.
And I'm just attorney, but to me, it's no brainer.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. But uh, yeah, counsel, let's uh, let's keep that conversation going if we could.
Absolutely.
Thank you, all right, anybody else, anything for Mr. Marchetto?
This Commissioner Torres, it was, um, I don't know if it's for, um, Gabby. Mr. Marchello, um, the doctor brought up a good point, the rear of the building, is that a two-way street back there? Or is that just a one-way street, and is it a Y street, because now trucks are gonna pull up to the back of the building for drop-offs and deliveries and stuff like that, how wide is that street back there?
So, the right of way is thirty feet. Includes a eighteen-foot cartway and two six-feet sidewalks. And being that it's dead end, there's very little traffic. So I think if, uh, you know, a truck wanted to pull to the end of the dead end street and unload into the building, i- it it shouldn't encumber.
How do they get back out then, do they, do they try? They 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 go reverse back out into?
I mean, depends on the truck, I think you can make a K turn in some instances. And others may have to back out.
Is it a one-way street?
It's a two-way street.
Yeah, it could be one-way, cuz it's a dead end, it it is, it's a.
Well, it's it's a one-way, yeah, okay, but it's wide enough for two cars to go by each other, is, or no?
Barely.
Yes.
Yes, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're talking about an alley here, right, it's, it's not a it's not a through street.
You know, the reason why we did this is Bergen Avenue has a problem with double parking, it also has a problem with on trash collection days, there's mountains of garbage, and there's very narrow sidewalks on Bergen Avenue. So we thought anything we could do to alleviate that pressure on Bergen Avenue and have those services happen in the back on Dick Street would be better for Bergen Avenue and the community.
So basically, there's no, no other car gonna be going down that street anyway, it's a dead end.
Correct.
It's gonna be mostly just going for that building, or the drop off to any other buildings that not even, the ones off front have a different side entrance, so.
That's right.
That's right, well, now that I'm looking at it now, that would be the only building there that has an entrance to it.
Right, because, yeah, the other.
Go ahead, Chuck.
The other building's uh front on on uh Newkirk Street.
You could, okay. That's not bad, that's not gonna cause any problems.
So Torres, I believe cars park there right now, I don't know if, I said the parking regulations for that street, but cars do park there, so there are cars that traverse that area.
On Dick Street, you're saying?
Correct, yes, on Dick Street.
Yeah.
We're not talking about, we're not talking about vehicular access other than that loading dock and I guess uh ride shares, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's all I'm concerned about is where the drop off, the moving in, moving out, uh, packages and stuff like that to that.
My my couple of concerns kind of follow Commissioner Torres about that, specifically trucks getting back there, um, Newkirk, in Dick Street I guess particularly um used frequently, however, Newkirk is used pretty frequently. I think I'd be concerned about trucks having to back up into Newkirk and, you know, potentially cause accidents or traffic jam, or things of that nature. So I don't know if there's any way we can look at that, to potentially alleviate that, or restrict how large your truck can go down that alley to make the deliveries, et cetera. Um, my other concern is too, I don't know if it's necessarily Mr. Marchetto's concern, or uh who's, but the sidewalk by Dick Street is very dilapidated, so is there any plans to improve that sidewalk, or, you know, make any improvements in that area?
We do show, this is Gabby, on the civil plan to uh redo the sidewalk along the our building frontage.
Okay, and then kind of a follow-up to that, again, I don't believe it's necessarily your concern, I believe if my memory serves me correct, on the corner of the street in Newkirk, um, on the side where your building's located, there's either like a telephone pole or some kind of light fixture there, and the sidewalk is so narrow, I don't know if, you know, a wheelchair or certain stability access could actually get on, you know, around that corner to the sidewalk. So I don't know if there's anything that needs to be done necessarily there, again, I don't know if that's your issues necessarily, but I think it might be a concern for you if you have, you know, deceased residents or people that might need uh ADA accommodations.
We can look into that with the the engineering department, um, when we're we're doing site improvements.
I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, let's make sure that, you know, Dick Street is is up to code if we're gonna put a residential entrance back there.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, anything else for Mr. Marchetto? Okay, thank you, Mr. Marchetto, nice work.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so I just wanna follow up with uh Mr. Height, uh, to briefly address the the height variance on her on the record.
Okay, and just for the record, Mr. Height has already been sworn in and is uh qualified tonight, and license, I'm assuming, is still current?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, good evening again, Commissioners, um, we did review the plans in terms of the zoning conformity. Um, there are two items uh that I did just wanna discuss with the board. Um, one, um, we did pick up a um deviation, it's really a technical deviation with respect to a step back. Um, the deco building, uh, believe it or not, does call for preserving uh existing structures. There are only seven other, seven total properties in this sub district of the redevelopment plan, with a very small little node, uh, if you will, um, of of the Journal Square redevelopment plan, that does call for retaining um the facades as well as the footprints of of the building. Um, the yard requirements reference a fifteen-foot setback, front step back at the fifth story, so we incorporate this along Bergen Avenue.
Also, if I I could just, sorry to interrupting, but I think, I think you're uh referring to the next application, the five-story building. Uh, this, this is the eight-story building, it requires fifteen-foot front step back of along Bergen Avenue, not at the rear.
Yeah, it, so the, I just wanted to clarify, um, it it speaks, the the language of the redevelopment plan is a fifteen-foot front step back is required for any additions above, yeah, existing Art Deco building, so.
Along Bergen Avenue.
Yeah, it's it's just.
Correct, so just specifically, so so the nuance there is is that this is a through lot and it's only applicable for the front along Bergen, thank you. Um, so then, i- in in specifically, the the one variant deviation that we need uh is with respect to total building height. Um, as was mentioned, we are maintaining the floor to ceilings of the existing structure, that adds um several feet to the overall building height, uh, there's a benefit to there, it helps us preserve the existing structure um and the existing facade with the the. Uh, there's a benefit to there. It helps us preserve the existing structure um, and, and the existing facade with the, the alignment of the windows. In terms of the remaining floor-to-ceilings, we do meet um, the code in terms of the minimum floor ceiling. Um, the, the eleventh floor is slightly larger. It's one foot larger, um, but it still complies with the total number of stories. The, the, the the A-story is one foot larger at eleven feet, uh, eight inches, but it still complies with the, the eight stories permitted. Uh, so in essence, um, we're taking advantage of the permitted eight stories, providing the A-story requesting the additional relief of seven feet um, and, and bringing this, this application to the board. So we, we do find that there's benefits in terms of, of increasing the building height, maintaining the ground floor-to-ceiling heights of the existing structure as well as proposing that, that additional uh, A-story um, that's permitted. Uh, those are the positive criteria which respect to the negative criteria. Um, there's no substantial detriment to the general welfare. We're only requesting an addition of uh, of seven feet above what's permitted. So along the street scape, that, that impact is, is very marginal. Um, along uh, from, from areas surrounding, you might have a, a, a visual increase, um, but it, it won't be substantial. The, the building has been designed um, with great care in terms of the aesthetics, with the differentiation in, in facade and, and materials, both in the front and the rear, to help mitigate any sort of appearance for a taller building. Um, with respect to impairment of the zone plan or zoning ordinance, we comply with all of the requirements of the redevelopment plan. So um, we do need this one, one aspect uh, for, for deviation. Um, so I don't think there's any sort of substantial impairment um, with respect to that. Sorry for the uh, mix-up. I'm, I'm reading these redevelopment plans over and over again. So apologize for that.
No worries, no worries. Um, okay, any questions for Mr. Height?
Chairman, I hate to harp on it, but I just can't get it out of my head. Mr. Height, there are seven buildings under the plan that have to be preserved?
Uh, so, so no, there are many other historic buildings in other districts that have to be preserved. There are only seven properties in this Art Deco sub-district that have to be preserved. Yeah.
And of those seven, is this the only one that is this version of Art Deco?
Uh, I, I really would defer to um, Mr. Marchetto, but based on my understanding, yes.
Yes.
And, and the language, just to be clear, it, it references the preservation of early twentieth-century structures. So given that this is nineteen thirty, it, it falls within that nuance. Uh, believe me, if it referenced nineteen twenty buildings, we would be revising the facade as this is a nineteen thirties era building. But it does reference that general time period.
But what I can say is, you, you guys, I said earlier, we're, we're presenting what's, what's permitted by the zoning, but we have heard the comments of the board and we'll probably be taking a look at, at this again. You know, depending on, you know, what happens tonight.
Understood, Mr. Harrington.
And that, that completes our presentation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from public?
Your chair signal public, I move to close the public. Mr. Chair, do you hear me?
Yeah, we have the motion and we have a second now. Okay, public is closed. Uh, Erica, do you have anything uh, you'd like to add?
Yes, um, just based on some of the comments that were made about this style of Art Deco, uh, I would just like to say that um, this zone was created with a historic preservation officer um, that still works with Jersey City Planning. And yes, this is not um, the same Art Deco styles as some of the other buildings, but um, you know, there are many different examples of this type of uh, structure that exists. And um, I believe it was, I'm looking at an email and originally um, I met with Vincent Marchetto about this two years ago and um, emphasized the importance of preserving that facade and provided different historic photos and um, different information about this style and um, just the building in general, after speaking with our historic preservation specialist Maggie O'Neill about this building. So um, since then, uh, you know, they've really incorporated a lot of the feedback that our office provided. And uh, again, it does really meet the intent of the zone. Um, and the variance that they're seeking is quite minor. Um, I provided a staff report to the applicant team. I believe I emailed this one today. But it's dated January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Wait, is this the right one? Sorry. Maybe it's not dated that date, but I did send a staff. Okay, and it has many of the standard planning uh, board conditions within it. And I just wanted to see if uh, council accepts those conditions.
Yes, they, they would be acceptable.
Okay. And uh, I don't have any further comments.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero dash one one four. Let's present it to the board here tonight.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, uh, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Dr. DeSantis.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Thakor.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Michelle Horton.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries. All in favor.
Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, let's call case P two zero dash zero eight-two is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variants for eight fifty-five to eight fifty-seven Bergen Avenue.
Okay, thank you for the record, uh, Charles Harrington, on behalf of the applicant. Um, this uh, project is actually right down the street um, from the last project. So um, it's in the same neighborhood. Uh, I have the same team uh, with me. Uh, there are devi- deviations requested, so I'd ask that the notice, notices be marked into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Mr. Chairman, I am and receive the affidavit of publication, proof of mailing with respect to the application. The property address is eight fifty-five, eight fifty-seven Bergen here in the city. All does appear to be in order. Again, this was also noticed for the January nineteenth meeting and carried to tonight's meeting with no further notice requirement. And we can go ahead and mark those as A1 for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you. So um, this project uh, is a five-story project. It's uh, actually in zone eight. Uh, and this uh, doesn't necessarily require you to keep a building facade, but this is somewhat unique in that one of the existing buildings, when we saw a determination of significance to demolish the building, Maggie O'Neill's con- conclusion or decision was that we were uh, to, that we could not demolish the building, um, that it had um, historical resources. So we have incorporated that into uh, the design, um, which uh, leads to a shorter sidewalk in the front, which uh, Charles Height will, will speak to and will speak to during the presentation. Um, this also has that, that nuance uh, that Charles was referring to in the last application, uh, because this is also technically a through light, through lot because it goes back to Vroom Court. And Charles can address that. Uh, and it also has a slight height deviation similar to the, to the last project, which um, but the height deviation is a C variant as we were be- before this board. So we have um, again, you know, worked with planning and the community on this. And with that said, uh, gonna turn it over to Gabrielle uh, first to get us familiar with the site and then take you through.
Okay, thank you, counsel. And just for the record, Ms. Cornelli is uh, still under oath and she is still qualified.
Thank you. Share my screen. Can everyone see my, my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So, as Chuck mentioned, um, this site, we're at eight fifty-five Bergen Avenue. We're just one block um, further away from the path station than our prior application. Um, we're on uh, Bergen Avenue between Academy Street and Vroom Street. Um, similar to our prior application, there, this, we are a through lot with a street behind us. It's called Vroom Court. Um, it's, it's not labeled on this, this map I have here, but um, if I go over to the tax map here, you, you'll see that Vroom uh, Court. We are block uh, one, two, one oh seven. Lots twenty-five and twenty-six. Approximately fifty feet by a hundred and seventy-five feet. And there's an existing commercial building um, on the lot. As, as Chuck mentioned, we're in the Journal Square redevelopment area, zone eight, the Bergen Square area. Um, a few minor deviations, which Charles and Vince will get into in further detail. Um, the site plan, so we're, our plan is orientated with Bergen Avenue on the right, Vroom Court on the left. It's, it's similar in that the building takes up the majority of the lot. Um, we have about fifty feet of frontage on Bergen Avenue. We're, we're planning to redo the sidewalk along Bergen Avenue um, and, and keep the existing street light there and, and the existing street tree in place. There is retail along Bergen Avenue in the front and and um, loading in the back, similar to our nine hundred Bergen Avenue application. This is a five-story building with fifty-one units. We do have letters from engineering and MUA. Pretty straightforward and we will generally comply and work with those agencies to um, address their comments. And that's.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anybody? Any questions for Ms. Cornelli? Okay, thank you.
Okay, then we're gonna uh, move right along to Vincent Marchetto to, uh, he's also the architect of record for this project. And he can uh, walk you through the, the plan.
And once again, just for the record, uh, Mr. Marchetto is still under oath tonight and he is qualified.
Okay, great. All right, so you're looking here at my cover sheet. As Gabby mentioned, this is, is actually very, very similar conditions to the previous project. It's a through lot. Um, it's in Bergen Square and it, and it's fifty feet wide and it has a, and it's a long project. I believe it's a hundred and seventy-five feet long. So, one thing that was interesting about this project is along the fifty-foot-long front, we were, weren't, were, were required to preserve this four-story facade. But this one-story building on this side can be demolished. And the, the zone allows for a five-story building with the fifth story being set back ten feet from the front of the building. So what we're proposing is to maintain this facade here or preserve it. So we'll re-point the brick, you know, fix any of the sandstone headers and lint, their lintels, clean up the corners and things like that. And then next to it, we'll do another twenty-five-foot-wide facade. This one using a different color as well as more modern uh, features as a way to differentiate the old and the new. So we'll have a new building with the, this two facades. Um, so let me continue here. Let me go to now to the uh, ground floor. So, here you look on the ground floor, along Bergen Avenue, we're gonna have our residential entrance as well as a retail space of one thousand three hundred and five square feet. Also on the ground floor, we're gonna have a three-bedroom unit that's gonna have a, a, a little terrace in this courtyard space. Uh, there'll be some storage lockers, trash room, which will exit out onto Vroom Court and picked up on Vroom Street. Um, a little fitness space. And we're also gonna have a, a large bike parking room that will be accessed off of Vroom Court. Vroom Court, I have a photo I can show in this application I will show you. It's very narrow. It's, it's about twelve, only twelve feet. If you look at this photograph, it looks just like a driveway in a parking lot, but it's technically a, a street. So, as you can see, there's not really much width to use it for vehicular traffic. But we think that because this project, number one, parking's not permitted because it's, it's too narrow for parking. And number two, it, there's a wonderful bike lane along Bergen Avenue that was recently constructed. We think we could use Vroom Court as a way to facilitate bike parking. So let me continue to the basement. So if you look at the basement, the existing basement is underneath eight fifty-five, that historic building that we're preserving the facade of. So we're gonna save that uh, basement. We're gonna bring down a stair and we're going to have the utilities. The water room and the electric service room is gonna all be uh, handled in the basement. So we could leave the facade along Bergen Avenue to be more porous retail lobby and so forth. So let me move up. This is a typical residential floor. We're gonna have some units face Vroom Court. Some units are gonna face Bergen Avenue and some other units are gonna face south on this, on, on this courtyard. The building has fifty-one units. There's gonna be twenty-five regular studios. There's gonna be twelve Alco studios. There's gonna be twelve one-bedrooms, one two-bedroom and one three-bedroom. So let me continue. Well, let me just point out right here. You can see you can see up here, this portion of the building at the, at the, the roof level steps back. So you'll have a terrace out here, another terrace on the top of the fifth floor with a, on the roof with an amenity space on the roof. That kind of wraps around. So you have a s- a seating area over here and then a front roof deck that fronts on Bergen Avenue here as well. Okay, so this is the elevation. You can see the existing condition here where we have that four-story building and the one-story building next to it. And here you can see we're gonna preserve this four-story facade and put a new facade that will match the height and the corners of that existing facade will come in here. And the, this portion of the building up above it will be set back ten feet. This is a look at the uh, Vroom Court facade. And you can see it's much more basic because i- it's not gonna be seen from any street. Same here. These are the side facades. The north elevation has no windows as the built, the units are focused to the south. And then, yeah, you'll see the south. This is the portion of the building that meets up with the existing building, our neighbor on Bergen Avenue. These are some blow-up details to show how the um, the ground floor and the upper levels will, will work on the elevation. The signage will be, will come back in a separate application when we have a tenant and know what the final signage will look like. These are blow-ups of the Vroom Court uh, top and bottom of, of the elevation. And then you can see here in the building section, I'm gonna explain that it, it's a similar condition from nine hundred, where the existing facade sort of sets the floor-to-floor heights. When we have to, because you know, the window locations are already set. So we're not asking for any additional height, essentially. We're keeping the floor-to-ceiling heights low. Set. So we're not asking for any additional height. Essentially, we're keeping the floor-to-ceiling heights low. So it, the variance really comes from trying to match the floor-to-floor heights with the existing historic facade that's there. Our overall proposed building height will be fifty-nine feet and I believe what's permitted is fifty-four feet. And yeah, and you can see also in this section how the building up above. The, the four stories sets back ten feet and then it sets back another twenty-one feet over here to get this amenity structure. So these. So it'll really from Bergen Avenue will feel mainly like a four-story building as these upper stories and elements are set back from there. And then finally, I just have, again, these photographs. You can see Vroom Court and you can also see this building from the side. So this. Element will be preserved and then a new building will come in and meet it here. And then there'll be a little piece on the top. One of the deviations that, in this area is required to have a fifteen-foot. Let me go to my ground floor. This area of, of Bergen Avenue was re- required to have fifteen-foot-wide sidewalks. And. Due to the fact, the, the existing sidewalk is about nine foot eleven. So we can't widen the sidewalk and preserve the facade at the same time. So in this case, we have a variance for sidewalk width because we're not permitted to demolish the existing facade. And then finally. Let me just touch base, use this. We have one other variance and I'll use this. The, the zoning reads that. Above the fourth story at the fifth story. You need to have a ten-foot step back. From the front of the building and Bergen Avenue is clearly the main front of our building. Due to the fact that it's a main retail corridor. So we've provided that ten-foot step back at Bergen Avenue. Vroom Court, on the other hand, is not a real street. It's more of an alley. And even though it's still a considered technically a front. We haven't provide that ten-foot step-back relief. We feel that, uh, I, Charles will elaborate on that case, but, but, but that's, but that's the cause of that variance. And that's really the end of my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Marchetto. Um, if you could, could you show us, uh, maybe zoom in on a. Uh, a studio with an Alco. Unit?
Here's an Alco Studio. Here you have the space to have a home office, if you can see here. You come in, you have a little space for a home office, small kitchen. Uh, area and then the bedroom is here in the front with the window.
Okay, and how big is that office space?
That's about six feet by eight feet.
Okay. Yeah, just my concern was that, you know, that could be used in as, as an extra bedroom. But I don't think that's gonna be possible. Okay, uh, thank you. Anybody? Any questions for Mr. Marchetto? Okay, thank you, sir.
Alright. Okay, thank you, Vincent. Uh, so now we'll, we'll move right on to, uh, Mr. Hyde again.
And just for the record, once again, Mr. Hyde has been sworn and qualified already tonight. He's still under oath.
Yes, thank you. My good evening, board members. Uh, I, I was getting ahead of myself, um, in the, in the prior application. Um, with this step-back requirement. Uh, I, I think we covered it in terms of, uh, where we do need to relieve. It's only for this one story. Um, and it's really in that, uh, secondary frontage, uh, on, on Vroom Court. Um, more or less the back of house. Uh, we did see on the plans, the existing streetscape, uh, street view photo. Um, of, of that alleyway. Um, that property currently does function more or less as a, as a. Improved, improved surface parking area. Um, I think they hold some, some temporary events. Um, where they had in the past, um, on that property, but, um. There, there's plenty of light and air in terms of, uh, separation from other existing buildings. Uh, and we are only, um, requesting the relief on the fifth story. Um, the, the principal variance or deviation, um, in the redevelopment plan that we are requesting is the building height variance. So. Similar to the last application, um, we are, um, proposing a new structure on a portion of the property. Um, and really the intent is, Mr. Marchetto, the reference is to maintain the existing floor-to-ceiling heights. Um, which are, uh, larger than typical. Um, and the relief needed in this instance. Um, is only enough to realize that this story which is permitted. Uh, so it, it doesn't raise to the level of, um, uh, great being greater than ten feet or ten percent. Uh, it's most, it's the minimum amount necessary to provide for that fifth story. Um, so there are benefits to providing additional, um, future tenants and residences in the building. Uh, again, we are, um, doing a substantial amount of improvements as a project as a whole. Um, just moving to the ground floor. Uh, I don't know if we need to pull up the plans, um, in reference to the, uh. Sidewalk width. Um, but th- there's a nuance here in, in terms of. That ground floor retail is required, uh, and where you are required, you have to, um, provide for the, uh. The minimum sidewalk width as per the plans. It's fifteen feet. So we're, we're essentially. Meeting the intent of providing that ground floor retail space along Bergen Avenue. Uh, you can see that, um. On, on the right side of the plan. Um, we're also. As was mentioning, balancing the intent, uh, with this application to preserve the historic structure and provide for, uh, the infill. Um, uh, residential facade on, on the other half. Uh, and, and in essence, that's competing the preservation of the facade, the footprints with providing a greater sidewalk. Um, i- in terms of the impact on, on this, this specific deviation. All the other buildings along this section of Bergen maintain this setback. So. There's, there's very little in terms of, of this being the pinch point along, along the streetscape here. So. Um, I don't see there being any substantial detriment to pedestrians, um, traveling along this section. Um, also the added benefit is, is there is some back-of-house access for this property, which will take. Uh, some of the, uh, demand for, for residences entering and exiting off, off the front. And, and bring that, that traffic to the rear along Vroom Court. I, those are the, the three deviations in terms of the positive criteria. Uh, in terms of the negative criteria, um, I don't think there's any sort of substantial impairment here. Um, we're meeting the intent of, of the district. Um, we're, we're going one step beyond with also, uh, really working with the historic, uh, planning staff. Uh, and, and maintaining this, this facade, um, for, for this area of, uh, of Bergen Square and, and, um, in the general. No square redevelopment area. Um, with respect to any sort of substantial, um, or detriment to the general welfare. Again, the relief at the fifth store is modest. It's, it's only the minimum needed to realize a permitted fifth story. Um, the step back is only, um, providing additional space to the unit that that fifth story. Uh, and only occur, occurs on the, the, uh, secondary frontage, if you will, on Vroom Court. Um, we, we do comply with the required step back along Bergen Avenue. Um, and, and I think you, you heard my, uh, testimony with respect to the accuracy of. Of, uh, the streetscape and, and the sidewalk width, um, along Bergen Avenue. So. Um, that's really my testimony in, in the grand scheme of things. We're realizing an appropriate population density per pacy. Where, where infilling, um, a portion of the property with a very compatible historic, um. Facade and also, um, maintaining an existing historic facade, which is preserving historic research as a purpose jet. Of the municipal law. That's, that's really the application.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, I have no questions. Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hyde.
My pleasure. Thank you.
And that, that completes our presentation.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Uh, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If, um. Anyone would like to comment, please raise your hands. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from public?
Mr. Chair, seeing no public, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Erica, do you have anything to add?
Um, I sent some standard, uh, conditions to counsel on this application. But I would just say that, um, I noticed Charles, you pointed out that some of the, um, people could enter, I think you said, onto the side street. But from what I could read from the plans, it's only accessible, uh, you can only get direct access either to the trash room. Or to the fire sta- the staircase.
Bicycle room is, is what I was referencing.
Okay, I, I can't tell that there's a door there.
Okay, so what I, maybe I can just clarify. We would like to have a, a sliding door in the bike room, which is depicted in the plan here. And that's mainly because, as you can imagine, handling a swing door with the bicycle is, is cumbersome. So we wanted to have an automated swing, uh, a sliding door, which is in the plan as you come here. So you could use a key fob. To open that door and then move your bicycle into the building.
That's, yeah, that's the access you're referring to, right, Charles?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And excuse me if you say it better earlier. I was doing a couple of different things.
No, it's good to confirm.
Okay, alright, so then that's great. Um, so, uh, Chuck, I sent you some standard conditions. I just wanted to see if you. If those are acceptable.
Yes, those would be acceptable.
So beyond that, staff doesn't have any, uh, additional comments on this, uh, application?
Okay, thanks, Erica.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero dash zero eight two as presented to the board here tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Okay, uh, Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Mr. Horton?
Aye.
Commissioner Ford?
Aye.
Dr. Desai?
Aye.
And Chairman Langson?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. All in favor?
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
Alright, let's, uh. You too. Uh, Mike, are you okay? Do you wanna take a break? Are you, uh, you good to go?
Um, I'm good. Yeah, if you wanna just do one more.
Yeah, yeah, let's do one more. Um. Okay, let's call case P two zero dash one seven one, uh, as administrative amendment for six eighteen Pavonia Avenue.
Hey, uh, for the record, Charles Harrington, on behalf of the applicant, uh, I did provide, uh, even though it's an administrative amendment, I did provide, uh. Notice of, of the requested amendments, but as that they reviewed and marked.
Thank you, counsel. I am in receipt of the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the administrative amendment at six one eight Pavonia Avenue here in the city. Again, this was another matter that was scheduled for January nineteenth and carried to this evening's meeting with no further notice requirement. Uh, all is in order. We can go ahead and mark those as A1.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, counsel.
Okay, so, uh, this project, um, is part of the Homestead Place Extension, um, projects. Uh, the board approved, uh, the project about a year ago. So, uh, since that time, you know, similar to other larger projects, we've, uh, they've looked at it and, uh, are proposing some changes. Um, one of which is, uh, they are going to remove the rooftop pool. Um, they're also removing, um, the continuous building marquee, uh, which will, you know, explain. How that works, uh, in the presentation. And then, uh, some other, uh. Amendments here are the result of the elimination of the basement, uh, in the building. Um, we initially had, had a basement here. There's a lot of concerns about, uh, rock, uh, here. Uh, we've seen it, uh, my client's seen it in other, other projects in the area. Um, so we're eliminating the basement and what that does is it creates some, some other, you know, domino effect changes here. So we're making some interior changes. Uh, we also, um, need to add a transform, an additional transformer room, um, for the project. And you'll see too, then there are some ground floor facade changes, uh, that we worked with planning on. Um, to, uh, dress up, uh, the area where the additional transformer room is and we're actually turning a corner. And, uh, some of the, uh, things that we're going to do here are provide for a mural on the transformer doors, kind of dress that up. So it doesn't just look like a drab, uh, side of the building, uh, and then continue, uh, the elements around, around the corner. Which is consistent with the, the Homestead, uh, Place Extension zoning. So, uh, with that said, I have Paul Freitas, uh, is here tonight, um, who can, uh, walk you through, uh, the, the changes. And I think, I don't know if he's, oh, there, he's, he's up here. And Paul is, uh, was the architect of record for the initial approval as well and is licensed, uh, in New Jersey.
And Paul, let me just swear you in, okay? You swear in testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Paul, P-A-U-L, Freitas, F-R-E-I-T as in Thomas, A-S.
Thank you.
Mr. Freitas, good evening. Uh, yeah, we've qualified you previously. Your license is current tonight.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you.
Mr. Freitas, you, you, you heard me walk through the proposed changes here. If you could. Do, do, you know, similar walkthrough and identify for the, for the board.
Certainly. Um, so. I guess the first thing that really kind of propagates most of these changes is that the cellar is no longer in existence. And there were a number of, uh, items within the cellar that, uh, had to kind of get relocated. Uh, specifically, uh, utility spaces and some storage spaces. So, um. What ends up happening is the cellar goes away and we have to kind of relocate those things. So, um. We moved some of this utilities and some of the storage areas to the second floor. Um, and of course, there, there was a vault, uh, that was included on the first floor. So some of the retail also had to get relocated. Um, not, uh, uh, the corner portion of the retail. Uh, is there any way for me to, I can share my screen. Here, I'm gonna share my screen. I think that'll be the most useful. So, um. Basically, I'll zoom in over here. It's the first floor plan area, which is that utility section where the transformer vaults are going. And as Chuck had mentioned, these are the doors that service, uh, service these transformer, these transformer vaults, uh, for P S E N G. They are, you know, it's gonna be basically a, a, a wall of doors, uh, with some louvers on top, uh, and. We are proposing a mural, uh, to kind of make them, uh, look a little more, uh, in keeping with the neighborhood. And just to, you kind of get rid of having it be such a, uh, you know, just a flat, flat, uh, elevation there. Uh, we also, uh, removed a lot of the marquee that was servicing, uh, the Homestead Place. Uh, that was originally approved. Uh, we still kept it at the residential entry, but we felt, felt that, uh. Having the marquee was kind of taking away some of the, uh, sunlight in the area. So we wanted to kind of create a more, more open and. A more daylight, uh, driven space. Um, on the second floor, you'll notice that again, we had some of those utilities that were situated in the cellar have been relocated. As well as the storage into, uh, the second floor. And then the retail services basically kind of popped up to the third floor. In addition to, uh, in addition to those changes. On the roof, originally, there was a pu- pool proposed on the roof plan, uh, that is no longer, uh, the case. The pool has been removed. Uh, and now it's just a big open terrace for, for the residents to use. In addition to all of, uh, these common points, we also did some minor revisions to. Uh, apartment types and layouts. All of the counts, all of the types, all have remained the same. It's just basically more, uh. Uh, interior design to kind of, uh, improve the apartment layouts, but all the counts, um, remain the same. improve the apartment layouts, but all the counts remain the same.
And Paul, just going back to the ground floor, if you could point out to the board where we previously had the retail that walked down into the basement. And now that's being brought up to the ground level. And now we have the retail right on Homestead as well.
Right. So here's the retail section that was this this room got considerably larger once P S E G, you know, they wanted an additional transformer. So we had to kind of co-op some of this space here. So that's basically the location there.
And on the other side of the building, along Pavonia?
Yeah. And then, of course, you have the you have a another, another service area right here.
No, but this this area right here in the ground floor, that that was open to below previously, correct?
Correct, yes.
Now, we're with the removal of the basement, we now have all this additional retail space at the ground level, correct?
That's correct.
And that's, I mean, that's pretty much it. We did. We did work with planning to to, you know, provide decorative elements for the transformer in that that portion that fronts along Homestead. So those those are incorporated into the plans as well.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Anybody, any questions?
Yeah, let me turn it over to you guys again. I don't know if I can. Am I still sharing the screen?
Yeah, we still see a screen.
I apologize. One moment.
That's okay. We'll figure it out.
Yeah, well, that that completes our presentation.
There it is. Okay, thank you. So I don't hear any questions. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from public?
Chair, seeing no public, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Erica, this is yours also.
Erica show. So yes, as Chuck mentioned, there was a lot of discussion with staff, particularly about the transformers on Van Riken Avenue and that just taking over that facade. So we have considered, yeah, doing a mural, doing something to sort of beautify those doors. And understanding, you know, not having the transformers in the sidewalk and then the whole thing about access. So this is something that people sort of help with having the the four doors there, which they have to have, because I believe the building has over 600 units. So it's different from some of the other projects.
Hundred and thirty-two.
Homeset Place Extension, as far as the amount of units. But I provided a staff report, I know, quite some months ago, when this was originally scheduled, I think in October. And I believe some of those conditions still stay, proposal has been revised. And I don't have any additional comments on this proposal.
Those conditions.
Okay. Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case P two zero dash one seven one as it was presented tonight.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Okay, and Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Commissioner Horton? Commissioner Cor?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries, all in favor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, commissioners.
Did we skip Eddie?
Where are you? Oh, there you go. I apologize. Commissioner Torres, now all in favor.
Okay, thank you. All right, so it's nine oh five, everybody. Let's take a five minute break and we'll call the SIP Ave Gateway redevelopment plan when we come back. So we'll get back at nine ten. Okay, could we come to new order again, everybody? All right, let's call the review and discussion of amendments to the SIP Gateway. I'm sorry, SIP Avenue Gateway redevelopment plan to allow for greater residential density on existing non-residential use land parcels. Formal action may be taken.
Okay, there is an area in the SIP Avenue Gateway Redevelopment Plan that is part of residential zone B that has existing commercial and industrial uses taking place. And this idea to amend this plan originally was revolving around one particular parcel. But since city planning started to look at it, we decided that multiple parcels along the corner of SIP Freeman and Logan Avenues would benefit from a change of the density. And I'll share my screen to show you the proposed changes. Here's the land use regulations for the SIP Avenue Gateway Redevelopment Plan, showing residential A District, residential B District, which the area that we want to change, that's basically a block that stretches along Logan and SIP Avenues that has primarily R one residential use. The thought behind this is that we didn't want to create a situation where it would be a fire sale of lots if we considered this for the entire district, where a bunch of people could, you know, sell their R ones and lump them together to get higher density in those areas. But that the only larger lots were on existing industrial and commercial lots, like the car wash at the corner and a couple of older buildings along Logan. So the change would allow for sites that have an existing non-residential use, the R one, two, or three standard shall apply, except that the density will not be regulated by units per acre, but defined by a building envelope derived from the size and shape of the existing site. Minimum room and unit sizes are regulated by building code and these, and thus the changes that would take place with this would have to be in compliance with chapter one eight seven of the recently passed Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance in the municipal code. And then just moved houses of worship from here to here. So basically, the density would fall under something similar to Journal Square. And this would allow some of the lots along the that corner I spoke of to redevelop and bring a some much needed additional units to the area, especially, you know, consisting of lower rents and with the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance included, it really will allow for people to allow for different residential uses to come into play that will help, I think, the community as a whole. So that's the extent of the changes.
Tim, how many lots are we talking about?
Approximately four, maybe five.
Okay, and any idea, you know, how many units we're talking about creating? And how many of those would end up being affordable?
We're figuring it's gonna be, the R three allows you to go up to eight stories. But under previous R three density standards, you really, you're really only getting with those lot sizes, which are still larger than the typical lots on the block. Maybe anywhere between eight and sixteen units with the existing. So if you change the building footprint, I mean, if you change the the density, you might allow more like maybe like four or five units a floor. You know, so you could really increase the the number and then whatever may fall under, you know, then once you apply the inclusionary zoning, that could be up to 20%. So which I think the rents would not be as high in the first place. So I think it will even out rather well, or it won't be such a it's not like somebody's going in and putting 700 units downtown or something. So I think the the costs, the cost and the benefit to the community will be much better. The cost will be lower and the benefit will be higher.
Okay, so we're we're determining the amount of units by floor area and the heights of the buildings?
Yeah, we're not holding it to a strict FAR, but we're basically just going off of what has been the predominant pattern of development in like Journal Square and stuff. And I'm not, we're not gonna, I mean, city planning would have more of a say as to what the unit sizes would be once an applicant will come in. You know, we're not going to go and allow a bunch of necessarily a bunch of studios or micro units. Because then the numbers just get all out of scale. And then if and when this passes through planning board tonight, then city council will have their own say on what kind of values will be generated from this.
Okay. All right, thanks, Tim. Anybody, any questions?
One quick question, Tim. How do, let's say there's a dispute, let's say, city planning says, based on the lot size, et cetera, you can have X units. The developer comes back and says, no, I think by our analysis, we want Y units. How do they, you know, when there's no specific regulation of units per acre, et cetera, how does that dispute get resolved? Or who kind of mitigates, you know, who's right on that?
Well, I think it would just go by the predominant, the predominant development within the city. I mean, like, like I said before, like, we're not going to allow for a bunch of micro units, even now, like, when certain developers come in and ask for, especially in Journal Square, they come in and ask for a lot of, you know, high density buildings with many units. I mean, it just wouldn't be applicable in this situation and would have to city planning could say, using best planning practices and say, this is, it's not considered like just a blanket as a bright thing. Like, we always have say in the square about the density, whether or not it's way over the line or not. And then ultimately, it falls to the planning board to judge based on their best reasoning, given the testimony that's given when the applicant comes for the board.
Understood. I think my concern, I just don't want there to be, you know, litigation or controversy where they're constantly saying that our analysis is different than planning board's analysis. And it's kind of a back and forth and, you know, it keeps getting challenged by, you know, precedent and different, you know, I guess, areas in the city where they, you know, say that is more indicative of Journal Square, that is more indicative of the situation, try to disagree with you.
I mean, certainly, certainly possible, but I don't, I would not expect those challenges to hold up, even if they were attempted.
Okay, I just want to make sure when I'm thinking, I said it's gonna create, you know, more of a heading for you guys.
Yeah, that is true. But I mean, this is already something that's been established in the city. I don't see it being a major issue, especially given the the climate of development these days. I think, you know, applicants will will come forward with much more practical plans that have modest, you know, modest room sizes or unit sizes.
Santo, do you concur with with what Tim says? On any litigation?
Yeah, I think that, you know, what you have to remember is density isn't only controlled by units per acre. The rest of the zoning helps to control and limit density, especially when you're talking about the R one, R two, R three zones. So I don't, I don't see it as as a problem.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Any questions? All right, Tim, that wraps it up for you?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody wants to comment on this application, I'm sorry, on this redevelopment plan, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from public?
Chair, seeing no public, I move to close the public portion.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. And Tim, we obviously have your recommendation already.
Yes, you do.
Okay, thank you.
Tim, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to accept and approve the review and discussion of amendments to the SIP Avenue Gateway Redevelopment Plan to allow for greater residential density on existing non-residential use land parcels and forward to city council with a favorable recommendation for formal adoption.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded for approval. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chairman Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
Commissioner Takora. Commissioner Horton.
I, thank you, Tim, and the planning staff for putting it all together.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Hi.
Dr. Desai.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Uh, did we get Eddie?
Yes.
Yes, he did.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Uh, yeah, it's an I for me.
All in favor, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, let's call case P20-090. Uh, is a minor subdivision, preliminary and final major site plan for 150 Room Street.
They did not respond to me today and get back about noticing. They said they were planning on noticing for this, so.
Chairman, for what it's worth, can we see uh, if Mr. Grant is in the audience?
Didn't see him earlier, that's why I'm wondering.
And also, Erica, while we're doing that, uh, did we have notices on 15 Park Lane South?
That um, 15 Park Lane South has been carried to this next meeting.
And they did not notice for tonight, they're gonna renotice for?
Um, I, you know, I didn't see the, sorry, I muted myself. I did not see the notice um, in the folder that um, planners are supposed to put their items in. So Phil wasn't there, I did not receive it.
Chuck has his hands.
All right, let's just talk to Mr. Harrington about that before we uh, skip over it, Chairman.
Okay.
Do not see Mr. Grant in the audience?
No.
Uh, this is a minor subdivision application.
This, Erica, I'm sorry, I just chimed in. I, I just wanted to know, I know Jim McCann's not on uh, the meeting, but I had, I had uh, emailed him earlier uh, to ask if he was moving forward with this. And my understanding from his email that he was going to carry it with the preservation of notices. So I can't, I don't know, you know, personally, if the notices were provided. But Jim, I think Jim's expectation was that it was a preservation of notices. So I would assume that they were made.
I'll see if I have that in my inbox, Matt.
All right, Mr. Harrington, just give me one second. Let's address the other two things, then uh, you can reach out. And maybe you can reach out to uh, Mr. McCann in the meantime. I'll preserve the notice if he, if he published it, I haven't seen it, so.
I mean, earlier, Santo, I, I, I'm sorry to interrupt. You guys did carry it with preservation and notice earlier in the meeting. I don't know if that makes any difference, but you already, you said it at around 5:35.
I'll text Jim and, and see if he can get, uh, if he has something he can send over to Erica.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure if he didn't notice that he knows he has to notice. And if he noticed, then he can get those in. And if they're in order, then it's a non-issue uh, for the next hearing date. And we will make that announcement, Mike. Uh, thank you for that, so.
Thanks, Mike.
Uh, Tim, going back to case P20-090, the 150 Room Street. We've now carried it, I think, twice.
This would be the second time.
But we still have not seen the notice?
No, we have not.
So Chairman, I, I don't even know how to, how to handle something like this, where the attorney is, is not communicating. I don't want to get caught with a situation of an automatic approval.
Sure. Well, that wouldn't be the situation, because he's already received an incomplete letter and he's already been scheduled. So I can't imagine that happening. I mean, we could, if he's willing to notice for the next meeting, he would still be at the back of the queue.
Yeah, so Chairman, I think what we need to do is, we need to notify the applicant that his case will be dismissed without prejudice if he does not communicate with us as to what's going on. Uh, I don't think it's fair for us to keep carrying it with him not communicating with us.
Well, he did communicate the last time that he was gonna notice for this date, but he did not notice for this date, nor did I receive any communications from him, so uh.
So in fairness, with the snowstorm and, and the fact that, you know, people have been having trouble, we'll carry it to the uh, next meeting date, which is the 17th?
16th.
16th.
16th. So we can carry it to that meeting date. And if we don't get this squared away, then, then we can address it at that meeting. Uh, hopefully, he reaches out to us and he was having issues because of, of the snowstorm. I, I hope everything's all right and it's, it's not something graver than that. Uh, so for purposes of the record and anybody from the public that's here, let's carry case P20-090, 150 Room Street to a date certain of February 16th. There will be no further notice at this time, and it will be carried to February 16th, 2021.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Really quick.
All right, so.
No notice that we know of, so they would have to notice before the next meeting, I'm guessing?
He may have noticed and hasn't sent it in. So we're carrying it with the preservation of the notice that he may have sent. And if it's all in order, since we've carried it now twice, i- it's acceptable notice. But we just haven't been provided that notice. If he hasn't noticed, then he's, he's gonna have to notice for the 16th, which.
Yeah.
Uh, would have to go out tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we do have Mr. Kelly's hand raised. Um, I don't know if he wants to shed some light on this, or he's just raising his hand for?
Who is Mr. Kelly?
Another, uh, Mr. Kieran Kelly.
Yeah, hello, sorry, I'm raising my hand for what I believe is the next application, just so that Erica could see.
Perfect. No, no worries. I, I appreciate your promptness. Uh, all right, so let's move on and uh.
Let's deal with this. Let's deal with 20-115. Mr. Harrington, luck?
Yeah, I, I just spoke with Jim. Um, he said he absolutely noticed, but he did not um, get the affidavit of service into Matt Ward.
Okay.
So he said he can provide that uh, tomorrow uh, to, to Matt and Erica.
All right, so he did notice for tonight, he wants to carry it to the February 16th meeting with no further notice, he's gonna preserve the notice that he did do.
That's correct.
So case P20-115 for 15 Park Lane South is being carried to the February 16th meeting. There will be no further notice of that application, this is your notice. So if you're here for that application, it will be heard on the February 16th meeting.
Okay, thank you, counsel. All right, let's move on to case P20-137. Is an administrative amendment for 333 Newark Avenue.
Okay, uh, for the record, it's Charles Harrington on behalf of the applicant. Um, this uh, this application um, is for administrative amendments to a project that uh, is actually under construction, close, close to completion of construction. Uh, it's located right next to White Eagle Hall. Um, it's actually the same developer, um, and owner. Um, so we are asking uh, for a, a few amendments, uh, a number of which deal with interior um, changes that, that are related to the, to uh, an exterior change. Um, the primary one though is uh, I believe it's uh, elimination of the PTAC in the building. On the uh, Mr. Kelly will uh, uh, explain that, how they, they found a better um, system and they were able to eliminate uh, the PTAC from the facade. With that being said, they, this work has been completed. Um, it was done um, back last spring, I believe, uh, you know, during the whole COVID pandemic uh, beginning. Um, but we can, and Mr. Kelly can confirm this, it's a better product. It's a more expensive product and it makes the building look better. Um, so with that said, I'm, I'm going to pass it off to, to Kieran, so that he can um, walk you through that.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Before we do that, uh, I did receive notice for this case uh, under cover of letter January 25th, 2021. And that included the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at 333 Newark Avenue here in the city. All is in order and Chairman, we can mark that as a one for the record.
Thank you, counsel.
Hey, Kieran, let me just swear you in, okay?
Yes.
You swearing a testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state by your name, please?
Kieran Kelly, C I A R A N K E L L Y.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, good evening. Uh, we've qualified you in the past, also, your license is current tonight?
It is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, so the um, the amendments that Mr. Harrington described are, are very minor. Um, but um, I actually probably imperceptible uh, in most cases from anyone on the street, with the one exception of the PTAC. Uh, can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so this is one of the sheets taken from the uh, submission drawings. The drawing on the, the, the building is on a, on a through lot. We have a frontage on Newark Avenue and also a frontage on Ford Street. What you have on the screen is a comparison of the Newark Avenue facade. The version on the left is the approved version. The version on the right is the new version that we are seeking approval for tonight. You'll notice that the primary difference is that on the left-hand side, the lower panel of each of the upper level window units has a grill, uh, a grill that was incorporated into the window unit to conceal uh, kind of a wall-mounted PTAC and air conditioning unit. Now, these uh, units are what we call efficiency units. There's six of them per floor for a total of 18. But in floor plan, and I'll, I'll quickly zoom up here so you, so you see, uh, over here on the right-hand side is a typical floor plan. Um, the units are approximately on average between, you know, they're approximately 375 square feet. These two facing north are 360 square feet. So then being efficiency units, a PTAC unit actually has a depth of about 18 inches into the unit. Uh, and given that these are efficiency units, they aren't the largest floor plans. Uh, we had always felt that that was a considerable size. And we had looked for many uh, not alternatives at the time, but we were looking for shallower PTAC units. Um, in the end, the solution uh, we found actually was, was a better system. And that was a mini splitter, a wall-mounted mini split system. Um, because while these units are small in plan, they are tall in terms of the volume of the space. So by mounting the unit high on the wall, it didn't detract from the floor area. And of course, then it has the added benefit, because you don't see these grills on the front facade. It's a much cleaner look. So the panels that once were grills are now glass matching the rest of the window unit. Uh, it's not a cheaper system, it's actually a more, much more expensive system. Um, but we felt that um, that it was, it was something that was, that was worth doing. So that change occurred on the Newark Avenue facade, as you see here, and also as I scroll down. This is the Ford Street facade, the, the same thing occurred, where you had the grills integrated into the lower portions of the window units. On the right-hand side, you see the new uh, proposed version with those eliminated. So that's, that's first and foremost, the main change that we are bringing to your attention. The other thing is that at the second floor of the building, uh, you'll see on my cursor here, uh, that was approved as a second-floor office space, which it still remains. But since then, the interior layout of the office was determined. And there was two separate office spaces at the front of the building facing north. So where we had fixed panels previously, we, we have opted to incorporate operable casement windows for natural ventilation. Um, without knowing the interior layout, previously, we assumed just an open plan office space with mechanical ventilation. Now we have provided accommodations for mechanical operation by the occupant of those uh, individual office spaces. Uh, on the Ford Street facade, we also simplified the windows at the second uh, floor level. On the left-hand side, you'll see that we had double casement windows. And what we, what we, what we taught in hindsight was that uh, it was probably busier than what was needed. And so what we wanted to do, if you see on the right-hand side here, we wanted to replicate the windows above, the same window pattern, just replicated on the second floor. So it's more consistent and more coherent in the overall composition. And then finally, the change that I'd like to bring to your attention is down at the street facade, uh, street level on Ford Street. Uh, previously, on the left-hand side, you'll see that we had a wider glass lobby entrance. This is your main residential entry uh, to the building. Uh, and so we had storefront glazing at the lobby. Now, inside in that space, previously, we had a gas meter room, which was set in from the street by about six or seven feet or so. Uh, public service uh, during construction required that that meter room be brought to the exterior wall. So where we previously had a glass transom, it then had to become a solid section of wall. And so you'll notice that there is a bit more brick uh, and slightly less glass on the new revised uh, Ford Street facade. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Uh, just two quick questions on the PTAC units. Um, or the, the absence of the PTAC units. For, I mean, this isn't a question, but you know, that's my pet peeve to begin with, are PTAC units. I hate PTAC units. Um, so the new units, um, are they easier to service than a PTAC unit?
Uh, I believe that they, well, they are and they are not. Uh, the difference is that whereas the PTAC unit is one unit sitting within a, you know, privately occupied residential unit, so you have to get access into the residence space. Um, you still have that component, obviously, because you have a, a blower on the wall within the unit. Uh, but you now have a small condenser on the roof, which is common accessible area. Um, so from that point, I would say it's, it's, it's even. Uh, the PTAC units do have, uh, and certain ones of them do have a issue of condensation, which needs to be dealt with. This unit does not have that issue. So from that perspective, there's no real water collection or dam, you know, moisture damage. So I would say that it's easier in terms of maintenance.
Okay, and um, yeah, I didn't know the units went on the roof. So, so there's no venting that's, that's required out through the unit? It takes place, you know, through ductwork going to the roof?
Correct. There's a refrigerant, a refrigerant line that connects the small condenser to the roof with the unit, the element in the uh, in the unit. There's no ducting out through an exterior wall.
Okay, gotcha. No, that's great. All right, anybody else, any questions?
Chairman, out of curiosity, how big is the condenser up on the roof for those units?
Uh, so I don't have the spec available here, but uh, they, they're, they're small. I believe they're about 13 inches wide by about 30 inches in length. And they're, they're, they sit vertically, so in plan, about 13 by 30. And I'll show you a roof plan. There was always a separate area on the roof, which is fully concealed behind a power cut wall for the location of condensers and, and mechanicals. Uh, that hasn't changed, and they're located in this area, which is on the Ford Street side.
Chairman, we might.
So we don't need to.
PTAC issue going forward.
I might just have to get Mr. Kelly's, Mr. Kelly's information and have him come to every meeting from now on. That's great, so we don't need to talk about, you know, any additional screening on the roof, correct?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, counsel, anything else?
No, nothing further.
All right, thank you. Uh, is anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application? Uh, if you could, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. I don't think I saw, maybe one call in. Um, okay, anybody from public, please raise your hand if you'd like to comment.
Chair, seeing no public, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Uh, Cameron, anything to add?
Oh, all right, just uh, that the applicant agreed to all.
Oh, all right, just, uh, that the applicant agreed to all conditions that were part of the previously approved applications associated with P numbers, P one six dash zero seven four and P one nine dash zero zero six.
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move
And that staff recommends approval.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thanks, Cameron.
The approved case, P two zero dash one three seven as presented to the board.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Okay, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Deckor.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Um, I just want to put something on the record, um, real quickly. We, um, it's a better product. You said it costs us more money. Um, but that doesn't make a difference if it was a cheaper product and you restored it before you came to the board. Um, and your client is a very good developer in Jersey City. He's been good to Jersey City, uh, and fair. Um, but he still should at least talk to the planning staff. I mean, I know we're going through a pandemic right now. That's understandable. But there's a lot of little things on and stuff that has been done already. And now they're coming to us and we've been taking a stand that that's unacceptable. Uh, and I think I want to take the same stand, even though the product is better. Okay, just because the product is better doesn't mean it's okay. So, but with that, I, I like the changes. At least if developers would just start talking to the planning staff, I re-saw that counsel and, and get that part started before they come to us. Then we can see that they're trying. So with that, I'm going to vote aye. I like the product. Thank you.
Okay, my internet like froze on me, of course, during the most important part. Torres, was that an aye?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. Uh, and Chairman Langston.
Um, yeah, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Torres. Um, you know, I always take the position that you know, whether it's, not that it doesn't matter to me, but you know, considering an administrative amendment after something is built, the, the applicants roll the dice there. Um, if, you know, if this wasn't a better product, uh, the, the cost, of course, you know, means nothing to the planning board. Um, it, but if, if it didn't make it a better project, you know, we're having a much different conversation tonight. So, you know, luckily this is a better product. I, I love the fact that we're losing PTAC units on this building. Um, so I'm going to vote aye, but you know, cautiously on on, on the fact that this is built already. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, understood.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, counsel. Uh, all right, let's, uh, move on to our last application tonight is case P one nine dash one seven seven is a minor subdivision. Uh, the address being one oh eight Pamper Po Avenue.
Chairman, that's my, my doctor. So, I mean, you know, do I, do myself?
Yeah, sure, Harkesh. Uh, you want to read cues and you know, this is our last one tonight. I don't know if you want to hang around and vote on memorialization of resolutions with us or, you know, call it a night?
I'll call the night.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for stopping in. Enjoy. Stay safe.
All right, so, uh, Peter Sessini.
Hello.
There he is. Nice.
Good evening.
Evening, counsel.
Uh, Peter Cecchinini, on behalf of the applicant, um, I'd ask we can move the proofs of, uh, notice into evidence?
Thank you, counsel. Mr. Chairman, I am receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application here this evening. It does appear to be in order. We can mark that as a one for the record.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Yes, this is a, uh, conforming minor subdivision. It's a fifty by one hundred and thirteen lot. Um, no variances are being requested. Uh, the planning, uh, Mr. Black has approved of the project and some conditions. The applicant agrees to the conditions, one of which is that, uh, in the future, when two, two family houses are built there, they will share a shared driveway to avoid, uh, taking up an extra on, on street parking space. Um, it's, it's pretty self-explanatory. I don't know if you need me to go further into it or if you have any questions?
Um, I think we do have one thing to address. I think there's a tree that's going to be removed.
Y- yes, we discussed that, uh, I believe on Friday, uh, in order to, you know, there's the only options there are to leave that tree and then take, and then have two driveways and then take up an extra off-street parking spot. Or we remove the one tree, replant two trees a little bit, uh, to the east, I believe. And, um, and that would basically create, it would leave one more space on the, on the, on the block for parking. So that, that was the option we went with.
Okay, so the two trees that you're proposing are on the applicant's property? Or in front of the property?
Correct. The two that are existing there are on his property. He will take down one and put up two more also on his property.
Okay, gotcha. So we're gaining a tree?
We're gaining
We're losing one driveway. We're having a shared driveway?
Win for everybody.
I don't want to say that yet, but it looks that way. Um, Cameron, you want to address something?
Yeah, I mean, so on page three of three of the staff report, there's a visual which has some incredible graphics that I put on there. Um, there is a, a red dotted circle around a red maple that is in subpar conditions, honestly. Um, in ten years from now, the canopy maple to the west will likely out-compete the canopy for resources, sunlight, water, et cetera, on the red maple to the east, thus killing it. And the removal of that tree could really only benefit this project by having a shared driveway and then planting two new trees. So it's, it's just the best option.
Okay, thanks, Cameron. Uh, anybody, any questions? Okay, thank you, counsel. Let's, um, open it up for public comment at this time. Um, if you'd like to comment, if you're a member of the public, I think we have one person that, uh, just entered something in the chat.
I think that's for another, uh, application, uh, chairman.
Okay, so, uh,
I'm going to respond to them and tell them that it's not on for this meeting.
Okay, yeah, I didn't read what they, uh, they wrote. The chat's not admissible for, uh, the record. So anybody from public, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. I do see a hand raised.
That's the same person with the chat, chairman.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps we should, uh, entertain it only because it's a question about an application that I'm not sure was even on tonight's agenda, so.
No, there's going to be a community meeting with Councilwoman Ridley about that project.
So we all know what we're talking about.
Right.
Alice.
Hello?
Hi, we got you.
Hi, this is Alice Frazier. I'm a resident of Danford Avenue. Actually, I was the one that spoke to, um, Councilwoman Ridley this afternoon because she knew nothing about this, um, project. Um,
Ms. Frazier, just for the record, uh, the project that you are referring to, according to the information that you put into the chat, is three seventy, three seventy-two Princeton Avenue. Uh, Mr. Black, do we have a case number for that application? Is that an application that's coming before the board?
It will in March. It will in March. I can get you that case number right now if you'd like.
Well, we received this from Stephen Joseph, who was on the call tonight. He's one of the attorneys. He sent this to everyone in our resident, in our community that, that tonight.
That the meeting was tonight, Ms. Frazier?
Yeah, this notice of hearing, um, P twenty dash zero seven two. Stephen Joseph Esquire Attorney for the applicant regarding three seventy, three seventy-two Princeton Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey. This is part of the Chapel Avenue Industrial Park Redevelopment Zone.
So Ms. Frazier, what I was trying Ms. Frazier, this is Santo Alampi. I'm the board attorney. What I was trying to articulate for you is that application, while it was noticed for tonight's meeting by Mr. Joseph, the application was not on tonight's agenda. So if you've been listening for the whole meeting, thinking we were going to hear that case, I will apologize to you because it was never on tonight. I do not know why he noticed for tonight's meeting. It was never on the agenda. So it will come before the board at a later meeting. Cameron, I want you to tell Mr. Joseph that he's going to have to notice for that meeting date. We are not carrying this because it was never listed for tonight. So Ms. Frazier, you and the other residents will get another notice.
Yeah, Ms. Frazier, this is Chairman Langston. I, I, I don't know what happened, to be honest. I didn't, uh, I didn't know that case was being noticed for tonight. It's certainly not on our application. And Mr. Joseph's name is not at the bottom of our agenda. It's my name. So, you know, that was never our intention to hear that case tonight. Uh, to be honest, I haven't had a chance to even look at it yet. Uh, we won't even address that for a few weeks.
That, that's fine. Who we anticipate receiving, um, who should we anticipate receiving notice from? We've made inquiries about property for a while now and haven't heard anything. So when we receive this, um,
So Ms. Frazier, it is on the applicant and their attorney, Mr. Joseph, to notice for the public hearings. However, they are not supposed to send the notice until the chairman tells them that their application is listed for a public hearing date. So it was sent prematurely and in error by the applicant. And they will have to renotice. So you should get that same notice with a new hearing date. And that, in theory, should be the date that this body says it will be heard. But I cannot tell you that what happened this evening will not happen again. So you may get another notice and it may not be on the agenda for that date. So my recommendation to you would be to check the planning website, the city of Jersey City's planning board website and see if that application is listed on the agenda for that meeting day. So that you don't sit through another one of these marathon meetings.
It's not a problem. I'm very well vested in my community. I learned a lot this evening. It's not the first zoning board I've listened to. So
Always welcome to attend. We're here every other Tuesday from five thirty till
I've said on many.
We have Cameron or someone complaining, post a link to where the agenda would be for them because there might be multiple.
Yeah, Cameron. Cameron, could you post, uh, post a link to the website on the, in the chat for Ms. Frazier?
Definitely. And it's always on the homepage of the city website. You can
Sure.
Look at our calendar and all links are there.
And Ms. Frazier, you, uh, you said that Councilwoman Ridley is involved?
No, actually I reached out to her today when we received the notice the other day. And I said, were you aware of this? And she said, no, she said, but I will reach out to the planning board and I will get back to you. She said, because it just sounds like there is an application for it. We don't know. Because I had, as well as other residents, when they started to demo the property over there that had been abandoned for some time, we were inquiring as to what was going to happen with the property. We even called the, the planning board to no avail. I left several messages and no one ever returned. So when we received this letter, you know, all the tenants here were like, well, let's get on the call because obviously this is our chance to find out what's going on with the property, which obviously is and to ask any questions that we may have regarding this property. Because we have a lot of concerns down here in this area that need to be addressed. So Ridley obviously reached out to your board on behalf of, of me giving her a call early today.
Okay.
And even, um, Stephen Joseph was on the call and I've said, I've attended many board meetings for the Department of Education here in the city. And a lot of times there are human error where some things have not been added to the agenda that later in the evening said, oops, we forgot this one. Let's put this back on. So that's why I sat through it. When I saw Stephen Joseph, I said, well, maybe there was an error. They forgot to add it to the agenda. So let's just sit through it. I'm in my home. I'm relaxing, so it's okay.
A- and Ms. Frazier, um, we err on the other side of that. I- if something's, you know, left out in error, um, we go out of our way to make sure that we don't hear it that night. Uh, we want to make sure that everybody, you know, has, has ample opportunity to speak and see the project that we're talking about. So, uh, I'll follow up with Councilwoman Ridley tomorrow and, um, we'll make sure that, you know, we get this right for you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Take care. Enjoy your night. Um, okay, so, uh, we still have public comment open for I forgot the address now, uh, for one oh eight Pamper Po Ave. If anybody wants to comment about one oh eight Pamper Po Ave, you could, uh, raise your hand. It's a minor subdivision. Anybody for one oh eight Pamper Po that wants to comment?
Seeing more public, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Cameron, um, you already gave us your recommendation, correct? Do you have anything else?
Just that they, well, they already went on the record and said they agree to the conditions. So staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you.
Like to make a motion to approve case P one nine dash one seven seven as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded.
All right, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres. Commissioner Torres.
Muted.
He's muted.
Oh, I thought that, Gus. I said aye.
Turn it.
All right, and Chairman Langston.
Aye.
All right, motion carries on in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Uh, before I call memorialization, I just wanted everybody to look at the clock. It's nine fifty-nine. No more applications on tonight. Look at us. Uh, all right, so let's call memorialization of resolutions, everybody.
I'd like to make a motion to memorialize the following five resolutions. Uh, resolution number one is applicant wave two LLC for preliminary and final major site plan. Approval with C variances. Address is one seventy-five dash one eighty-five Academy Street. Block, uh, block, uh, three point one three, case number P two zero dash zero nine seven. Next resolution is applicant Ramna Rayana Properties LLC for a one-year extension, a preliminary and final major site plan approval with C variances. Address three oh seven Pine Street and three twenty-six to three twenty-eight Johnston Avenue. Block one seven five oh five, lots ten and eleven, uh, block, uh, I'm sorry. Block, I'm sorry, case number P20-148. Next resolution is applicant T-Mobile Northeast LLC for minor site plan approval, address at 131 Dudley Street, Block 15901, Lot 13, case number P19-081. Next resolution is applicant 454 Second JC Group LLC for preliminary and final major site plan approval with bulk variance relief. Address at 454 Second Street, Block 11008, Lot 1.01, case number P20-128. I'll entertain a motion. That was only four resolutions, Chairman, because the fifth resolution we were, we did not hear today. That was
Gotcha. Okay, gotcha.
We did actually hear that one.
No, did we?
Yeah, 618 Pavonia.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, we did, we did hear that.
True. So the applicant, the resolution is applicant 618 Pavonia LLC for final major site plan administrative amendment approval. Address is 33 dash 35 Ripon Avenue and 616-618 Pavonia Ave, Block 7905, Lots 20, 21, 22, and 23, case number P20-171.
Okay, I'll entertain a second, please.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Erica, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin? Aye. Commissioner Desai?
Aye.
Commissioner Horton?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you. Executive session, anybody? Still early tonight, guys.
Where are we meeting?
Now.
All right, I will entertain whatever motion comes our way.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to exit, to adjourn.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second for adjournment. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned. I apologize to anybody that's still on that expected another application tonight. We'll get it all worked out. And enjoy your night, guys.
Thank you.
Get out and shovel with all this extra time.